Good evening and welcome to the December 4th, 2019 school committee meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mrs. Dixie, everybody is here. Thank you. And we have very special guests tonight. Thank you so much for being here.
Hi, everybody. We are the Wilmington's. We are the Wilmington Middle School Acapella Group. We range in grades 6 through 8. This is a non-auditioned group, so anybody who wants to learn more about acapella music is welcome to join. Some of our members are heading down to Disney as we speak to participate in cheerleading competitions as well as dance competitions. So we're small in numbers, but we're mighty in voice. So we have three songs prepared for you. We have the Star Spangled Banner. We have a song called Havana Shira. And then we will end our little performance for you with Deck the Halls. So we're going to do the Star Spangled Banner first. So if everybody can stand up. One, two, three, ready, go.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the red hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that Star Spangled Banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave. Havana shira, shir hallelujah. 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 Havana shira, shir hallelujah.
See the blazing red flags. Bum, da, da.
Bum, 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 bum. Deck the halls with boughs of white旗 Ba-la-la, ba-la-la, ba-la-la. Bum, 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 bum. Deck the halls with boughs of white旗 Don't we now our gay apparel? Ba-la-la, la-la-la, la-la-la. From the ancient old white cabin, Ba-la-la, ba-la-la, ba-la-la. Bum, 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 bum. See the blazing blue before us, Ba-la-la, ba-la-la, ba-la-la. Strike the harp and join the chorus, Ba-la-la, ba-la-la, ba-la-la. Follow me in merry measure, Ba-la-la, la-la-la, la-la-la. Bum, 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 bum.
Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate it. We got snowed out at our concert yesterday. So it's nice that we can have a performance still. So thank you. All right, you guys can head out.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. That's awesome. We will start with approval of items by consensus. Approval of minutes, November 13th, 2019. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That's unanimous. We have approval of disposal of surplus equipment. Wilmington Middle School IBICO 2700 laminator. You have something in your packet. Do you need anything?
Uh, no, that's fine.
Okay. The recommended motion is move to declare the Wilmington Middle School's IBICO 2700 laminator as surplus for disposal.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? Excellent. Next, we have approval of Wilmington Educational Foundation miscellaneous grant to Wilmington Middle School physical education teachers in the amount of $946. You also have a piece in your packet. Can I just read the top part? No, they're not here. Just my picture. Okay. The Wilmington Educational Foundation requests the approval to award Wilmington Middle School physical education teachers Michael Bullers, Paula Simpson, and Kevin Meeker with a general grant in the amount of $946 for their grant submission Warm Up Your Kettle Bell in order to purchase kettle bells for their PE classes. So thank you Wilmington Educational Foundation. Is there a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous. Then we have second reading approval of school committee policies. I'm going to actually take them one at a time. There were a couple of questions, so I'm actually going to skip over for now. We'll come back to it when we talk about the new policies for tonight. I'm going to skip over for now BDE, BDG, BE, BEC, and BEDBE. So I'll take the rest in order. BCA, BDF, BDFA, BDFAE1, E2, E3, BDFB, BEDA, and BEDB. Is there a motion? Thank you. Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor of accepting those school committee policies? Thank you. That's everyone. We have some warrants, G408, L33, L34, L35, and FS11. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That's unanimous. Warrants payroll 11/2019 and 12/419. Is there a motion? Mr. Bjork, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have CBO3 and CBO4. Is there a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? Two abstentions. And then we have warrants sped 10. Motion? Mr. Samaha, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? And that is three abstentions. Thank you. All right, moving along. We have our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. There are two items this evening under the superintendent's report. The first, item 4A, life-threatening allergy information for families. It has come to my attention recently that as a school district, we have an awful lot of work that has unfolded over time as it relates to supporting students with food allergies within the district. But it also seems to be an opportunity to try and pull or weave this information together, not only for families currently in our district that contend with the challenges for their children with food allergies, but also for incoming students or students that are either moving in or moving up from, say, kindergarten. And so thank you to Ms. Crowe, Dreene Crowe, as well as her colleagues for putting this item together. This document, I think, is well put together and assembled and includes information pertinent to what, as a school district, we try and do to support with and work in partnership with our families. So it's informational this evening for you. Item 4B, the NIASC accreditation status. You'll see a copy of the memo that was recently received by Ms. Peters, principal here at the Wilmington High School, dated November 13th. As you know, the high school under Ms. Peters' direction has been very active and involved with the first phase of the NIASC accreditation, and very pleased to be able to share this with you that as following the recent collaborative conference visit here to Wilmington High School, NIASC voted to award the school continued accreditation in the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. As you can see in the memo that's included in the packet, it goes on to cite a number of things that the team, visiting team, was quite impressed with, as well as some of the other findings as part of this. I won't go into great detail here, but suffice to say, this is good news for us, and it goes to the work and leadership of Ms. Peters and all of those that worked very closely with her as part of the team. You'll hear more about NIASC as we move into next year. This is, again, the first phase of it, but this is great news, and again, great thanks to Ms. Peters and her team for making this possible. And that concludes the superintendent's report this evening, unless there are any further questions about those items.
Mrs. Burns.
Just a quick question. With regards to the life-threatening food allergy information, how is that being disseminated to parents?
Great. So my, the intention is to push this out through each school site or share with, obviously our school nurses have points of contact with those families.
Okay.
It's also, though, something that if it's not already, I certainly will look to have Ms. Crowe post. I think it's very appropriate as a document on our website, under Student Support Services, Health Services.
Perfect. Thank you. Great. That brings us to old business. And first, we will look at the homework policy. Dr. Brand.
Sure. Thank you. So we have, as you know, been recently, again, talking about the homework policy, Policy IKB, that this committee passed and put into revisions for last school year. And I'm back this evening to share, not necessarily new information at all, but really a new recommendation. It's becoming clear to me that, well, this policy certainly is in effect and was passed, of course, by the school committee ultimately, based upon the work and recommendations of the homework committee that was formed year prior to last. And I think it's also quite clear that we certainly have more work to go as it relates to bringing this policy into play, if you will. And it's through continual conversation with our leadership, members of our leadership team, I, we have an opportunity before us, not just for bringing to life this policy, but also to continuing to advance and engage in dialogue around what our expectations of homework are, things such as around holidays and long weekends. I'm not sure that we have that in any one particular document. I think that that's a critical piece as it relates to the policy. So it's my recommendation that we effectively reconvene the homework policy committee, or at least, at the very least, extend an invitation to those members. As I mentioned previously, what we don't have currently is a complimentary piece to the policy that really enacts it. In some districts, you might refer to that as a procedural document, but some document that is more guided towards impacting practice and activity on a day-to-day basis. So, in other words, as an example, when we hire a new staff member to the district next September, and he or she is walking in to their classroom and to their school building, conversations or meetings or respective planning around how to enact the homework policy, those are pieces that that new staff member would, of course, miss. So what I'm suggesting that I think will help go a long way is the development of this complimentary piece to support and enact the policy. I think that's what's needed. And so in talking with members of the district leadership team, their suggestion was, why not extend an invitation, at least at the beginning, to those members who served on the homework policy committee to see if folks would be willing to come together and help work on developing that? So not looking for action, but really just something to share and happy to gather or take any feedback or questions you might have around that recommendation or anything else related to homework policy.
Questions, discussion? Mr. Ragsdale.
What kind of timeframe do you envision for this process?
Yeah, so I actually think the development of this piece does not need to take an extensive period of time. So my thinking is to try and get together a sense of those members of the committee over the course of December before the break and enact them, or to bring them together, rather, first thing in the new year. I think that this is, and let me be clear, that this policy and the adherence to that and the work within classrooms and such is not something that needs to wait for this piece by any means, but I think that this is something that can span, you know, January, February kind of thing and be a document that will be able to be put into play really quite quickly.
Other questions or discussion? And I'm not opposed to bringing the policy committee together again. I was on that committee, I believe. Mrs. Newhouse is on that committee. I think my only concern is that we did that, and it sort of has stayed there, and I know that there was change in leadership, but I am worried that if we're not, if it's just certain people in certain buildings, it's still really tricky to sort of make this happen, as we've seen. We've gotten lots of feedback, and I feel as though, so I think this is a first step, but then I wonder if having the building leadership pull their own committees together and look at this. I mean, I don't think, I think this is the policy, and this is what we're framing it as this, but I don't know if it's the job of this committee to then say, and this is how you have to do it. I think we say, these are the guidelines, and then how you decide to do this in your building takes on its own.
Yeah, and let me be clear, I don't think it has to be the members who served on that committee, but I do think it's important to have a cross-representation of staff across the district and not leave it just at the building level. I think that there's a, an importance to be, it's, again, about consistency, and that can be similar, you know, as a case in point, the common expectations around homework and not having homework over the holiday time period. And in my discussions with the leadership team, I said, well, where do we have that written down? We don't currently. So that's sort of an example of the kind of things that I think can be helpful. Again, it doesn't have to be members of the committee. If there is not, if there's not a willingness for those that serve on the committee to volunteer, that's fine. It'd be my intention to bring together a cross-section of staff anyway. It doesn't have to be a huge group, I don't think at all, but something that can be helpful to formulate this next piece.
Mr. Ragsdale.
I agree with Ms. Bryson that I think that the staff representation at this stage is particularly important because at the level of generality at which the policy is written, then getting down to, but what do I assign? You know, it's almost a philosophy of homework rather than like a specific, you know, guidance document. That's the whole reason of this endeavor. But I think that we really need, you know, teachers who can inform that discussion importantly of, you know, but what does this mean? Like, if you see this, what does that mean to you? And what does that mean to you? Like, what kind of a homework would you assign in these types of situations? This is really, you know, it's a guide to practice, and so we need practitioners to be, I think, some of the lead drivers of that. And not solely them, but I agree that this is something that has to be, I think, you know, much more teacher-led than sort of from the, you know, I don't know, committee-led.
I agree. And I think that there were some pieces in that, in the policy, about meaningfulness and not busy work, and that was something we stressed again and again and again, and the feedback that I'm getting from the public is that that's not what they're seeing. And so some of the things, I'm kind of like, well, are we talking at the building level about meaningful homework? And what does this look like? And so I'm not, I think this is a great first step, but I think that, I think families and children are going to want something a little sooner than February. Like, I think we need to move a bit faster than, we'll hopefully get out a new document in February, and then hopefully by, I mean, this is now, we've missed a whole year, I mean, it's really been a long time since this policy started. Mrs. Burns.
Taking both, both conferences, because I have to agree with you, Mrs. Bryson, and your concern, and I think, is it possible to have school leadership speak to their staff and see what this could look like in each of their buildings and bring it back to the whole committee to form a policy? You don't want to be too stringent with it, but you want direction to be able to form it concisively enough so that it can be done consistently, but it can be customized per the grade level and the work typically assigned to that level in projects. So when, and I say it's a kind of a really advantageous, it's a really small timeframe to be able to have leadership meet with staff rather in pockets to get their insight to what this looks like in their buildings and bring it forth to a committee to try to shape it up into a general policy that gives them the flexibility, but also gives them a path that they can follow, you know, of expectations.
Well, I think part of our issue, and Mrs. Newhouse, like, when we were doing this work, we had, we had representatives from different levels, but part of it was trying to make this broad enough that it would fit in with elementary and secondary, and so that, so it's wide. I mean, it does, it's not specific, and so if we bring that committee back together, and I think we're going to get more of that, it's going to stay general and be hard. So I-
Could it be broken down in, for those levels?
Sure, sure.
I mean, maybe-
So again, I'm not opposed, I think this is a great first step. I guess I'm just trying to say, I would like to see some urgency, like, fast, so that we can listen to what people are saying and how much time some kids are spending on homework. It just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem equitable. It doesn't look like we're meeting their needs.
And again, I don't want to suggest that there's been an absence of movement or discussions at the building level for leadership, and I certainly can't speak to what was happening behind the scenes as it related to the buildup of this policy a year ago. I mean, I have to believe that there was, there were discussions with and between leadership at the building level. I'm hearing the same thing. I know we have, we have work to do, for sure, around building consistency, but that's not to suggest that there's not been a reframing of the approach in different pockets throughout the district as well, too. And so it's to that end of, my concern would be just leaving it to building level would not necessarily get at some of the inconsistencies that I think some of us are hearing about. So.
Other questions, discussion? All right, so more on this very soon.
Right. Item 5B, the Walker Report. Thank you to Ms. Brown-Lagrande, who's put together an overview in this memo that's included in your packet 5B around the specific recommendations. We obviously had a lot of information that came at you as it relates to the Walker Report, the Walker Report being the review of Student Support Services and more particularly Special Education. What Ms. Brown-Lagrande has captured here is the specific recommendations as it relates to the specific focus areas. You recall that there were four, four focused areas and the recommendations. And alongside that, in this chart are the action items that are associated with that, and then the final column to the right, the third column, the status, is an attempt to try and reflect some of the work that has already begun, and I think that that's important to capture. That report is dense. It's got an awful lot of information, but when you do boil it down to the recommendations, and I think that this memo does a nice job to capture that, work has either already begun or it's planning. It's in the planning phases, relates to, as you'll note here, some of the items that are included within the strategic plan. That is not to say that all of these items are in the strategic plan and are going to be addressed this year. That's a three-year plan, but there are certainly, I think, lots of examples where action has already begun, and I think that that's a good thing. For me, it boils it down to something that's not as overwhelming, because there's an awful lot, again, that was in that report and part of our action steps to move forward. But certainly, this is a large body of work. There's a lot of things that were called out on that report. The good news, the alignment, again, with that strategic plan, there's a lot of things that that Walker Report, if you will, echoed with the feedback that was gathered through the strategic planning process. And so in some respects, you know, this is, I won't say that this is a second strategic plan for us, but in some respects, I'm looking at it like it is, because it's more than just a one-off area here or there to try and address, for example, the improvement in our IST process. This work is critical, it's vital, it goes together, and it gives us with, it gives us as a district with an awful lot of priority areas to address. Some members of the committee have asked, well, how will we be kept apprised of this work going forward? A great question, and I would certainly suggest to you that even in the absence of a strategic plan that's out there, that appropriately so, I need to bring back to you to provide highlights and updates periodically. So too is the case with this Walker Report. And I would predict to you, I think I've maybe said this before, and if not to you as a committee, then certainly to the district leadership team, I fully expect and anticipate that as a committee, whoever's sitting around this table, and it's hopefully it's all of you going forward, that you'll continually be, as a governing body, referring to the Walker Report a year, two, three, or four years out, as you should be, and I think that that's appropriate. So I'm not, I guess it's a longer way to say, I'm not sure exactly the frequency of these updates, but let it be, let me be clear that I know that it's important that you are updated with things along the way periodically. So an effort to try and pull together or summarize, I guess, where it is that I see us going and in my conversations with Alice around the work as a district going forward. And with that, happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Mrs. Burns.
So I have to tell you, since getting the Walker Report, it's all I can think about in breaking it down, and I have to say, I absolutely support this process. I really would encourage you to look at this as a strategic plan and whether or not create it, because I think at this juncture, I think it's necessary. I also think, I think I have a lot of questions that also built in around this that may be, I'm sure, part of these actions and the goals, but that I would be interested, I'm not looking for a definite response from you, but with regards to, I think, one of the basic issues that we face within the Walker Report, generally speaking as a whole, is communication around special education, resources and tools, administrators, their staff, the level of knowledge, and I think it can be addressed with the professional development piece, of course, but it's the action of actually doing it and practicing it and working collaboratively together. I think, and this is something that we've been, this is one of the biggest monkeys on the back of not only our district but others, is that, is finding the time that staff can collaborate with regards to curriculum and modifications of curriculum. That is something that I think has to be a priority as we step forward in this piece. With regards to the past month and a half of information that's been disseminated to the board, looking at the de-cap piece and- the board, looking at the D cap piece and youth risk behavior survey and the Walker Report, I do hope that bringing a consultant in every couple of years to, as we move forward in this piece, would only benefit us and, I think, support our goals in meeting, supporting our students. But in seeing the resorts, the reports and the data, and especially alarming as one point, because I'm not going to commandeer the conversation, but is that seeing that majority of students who drop out of school, have disabilities and/or are on IEPs, that's alarming to me. They take up the majority. And some, forgive me if I put it in a harsher tone, but we, I almost feel that, not intentionally, but we are failing each of these kids, and each of these kids we're responsible for. And I think with, until we can find the time for our staff and administrators to collaborate to strengthen their programs and strengthen their skills within their classrooms, I'm, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm just extremely concerned because it's the here and now. Time is our enemy on top of this, because we have kids who are struggling. And we need to, and I'm hoping with this process, we can see that action immediately within our schools. However, we need to support our administrators or our teachers and staff to ensure that if there are students who are failing, that we can enact these tier, these level, the tier levels of intervention, the D cap. We can start that now, but we really, as we move forward, I think we really need to try to see how we can find time for our staff to collaborate, because I think that's one of the biggest factors with the breakdown of the execution of some of our policies and some of the resources that we have within our district, the lack of knowledge that they exist, the lack of knowledge as how they're supposed to be expedited. I really think that in order for this to, to really gain, you know, gain traction, we need to fix that piece and, and bridge those communications and find the time to, to do so. Because without doing that, all this hard work, and I know that the department and Alice has built up wonderful programs, but I, but I think there's a disconnect with communication and, you know, it's, and we all know that teaching nowadays isn't just a showing up for a classroom, teaching a lesson, going home. There's a lot of things that are put on staff and administrators that, you know, I think it's ever more so necessary. So I just wanted to speak to that. And I think a strategic plan of some sort, how, whether it be an amendment that ties into what they, what has been created, may be a very viable and, you know, necessary thing, just so that we can see how we are, see our own progress and that the board can actually see the results of how we are progressing, you know? And I, I thank the staff who were interviewed during this report for their honesty, because I think without that honesty and that ability, we wouldn't really be able to see the, it's tough to, to, to put yourself out there and say, look, this is where we're failing. And I think it's so very necessary to move forward and so to be able to sincerely strengthen the program and capture those kids that are currently struggling within our system, so.
If I, if I may, in response, just briefly, and thank you for pointing that out, the, the time is the enemy, is I think the phrase that you used. I'll speak on behalf of the leadership team to say that they collectively could not agree more. And, 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 you know, we're, we're, we're thinking about the school calendar soon enough for next year. Beyond fiscal resources, the time piece to collaborate with staff, not just about the inherent topics, if you will, that are included in or as part of the Walker Report. Quite frankly, it goes to the previous topic that we were just talking about, about homework, and it extends much farther than that. You, you, you know as well as I do the sheer number of initiatives, new program launches, curricular-based, and it is daunting to think about how we make that possible in four early release days and one professional day and one staff meeting a month. So I won't say any more than that, but it certainly, I couldn't agree more.
Could I ask you, is there maybe a technology device or an app device that teachers or administrators can access where they can Google a search word and come up with it timely? You know, like, I know certain things that they may be searching with regards to like how D caps are executed. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just going, that's in my mind right now, so that, using that as an example. Is there something that might be created where staff may have a resource where if they Google something and, or they see, you know, see a student struggling and they-
I'm not sure, you mean within the district?
Like if there, an app can be created almost. I mean, not to give somebody one more thing to do, but just a, a resource that, reference resource that staff could access from their classroom where if they feel that maybe a child is struggling and they want to access one of the interventions or one of the, one of the interventions, whatever it may look like, it, they can Google it and see who, where they can find it or the information. This is how it's, you know what I mean? I'm just saying, it's just getting that information in the hands of those people who can expedite it and communicating so that it follows the tier, you know, the communication in regarding to drive it, so. But, okay, thank you, sorry.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I, I think I want to just underscore sort of this point about making these types of changes and working with the, sort of the structural time that we have to work with staff on, on all these new initiatives. I think one of the, I think one of the, the points that I really took from, from Mr. Vary's presentation was when he was saying that you really have to approach these issues with a, a realistic approach to change. That, you know, just putting someone up to deliver a lecture for an hour and then they can, you know, give some great information and you're not really going to see much of that information from that alone reflected in actual classroom practice or administrative practice, that, that these types of things need additional, you know, follow-through. And there is a certain kind of amount of, you know, accountability and review and monitoring aspect to really make sure that these turn into, you know, changes, you know, that everything actually flows down to, you know, something different happening in the classroom and with students. And that, you know, as, you know, talking about the calendar next year, and this ties into, of course, so many things about scheduling and the program of studies and the consolidation of the buildings, like, it's a very, very complicated puzzle here. But I think that we, we absolutely have to be thinking about all these pieces because, as you're saying, with just kind of, you know, a handful of, you know, half-days and, and, you know, an all-staffed day here and there, it's, it's very difficult to really, you know, you can, you can convey information, but it's really difficult to actually change what people are doing and therefore to change outcomes. And that we have to really try and keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Mr. Samaha?
I just, I really enjoy this discussion. I think this is, this is good. I agree a lot with what Mrs. Burns had said. I think that, you know, the Walker Report, I think, when you think about the strategic plan, that the two of those should, I think, should be sort of given the same weight, you know, sort of equal. And I agree that the problem in education is, is the amount of time, you know? There are 700 things to do and you have like five days to, to get them all done. And that's true of education all across the country and especially true here with, with things that we have to do. So, you know, I just, I think that, you know, really highlighting, you know, I like the, you know, the idea of the Walker Report being something to look at next year and the year after and always sort of going back to it. Because sort of like what Mr. Ragsdale said, too, where you're, you know, you're, you're taking a look, you know, what is the most important thing that we can do right now? What is the, what is the, you know, the most important thing? And then, you know, slowly working in all the recommendations, or as many as we can get to, so.
I echo what everybody said, but I just wanted to say, too, that I thought the summary was a great summary of the larger report and really answered many of the questions that I know I had at the last meeting of, you know, how are we doing all of this? Where is it going to happen? You know, there were a number of budgetary issues and I think it's laid out nicely here and, you know. Unfortunately, it can't all be done today or yesterday, like I know everybody would love it to be. And, you know, it's at the detriment of children who are still suffering or struggling, but we're working on it. And with all the initiatives that the staff have, I think this is a great, realistic timeline and, you know, everyone's doing the best that they can. And I thought this was a great summary.
Thank you for sharing that. I'll pass that along to Alice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it brings us to new business. We have the final 2019-20 school year enrollment report. Dr. Brand.
In your packet is, is a memo that provides an overview. And I just, I do want to point out that this can be considered almost final, but not official because it is the data that was submitted to the Department of Education, but they, as, as you, I think, know, have to make, make that final and official. And to this point, I don't believe that they've quite yet done that, but nevertheless, I think it's, it's fair to say that this is as close to final. You should consider it as a snapshot of the enrollment. So this provides an overview of the overall enrollment in our school system as of the October 1st enrollment. It also provides the 10-year enrollment history. Thank you to, to Paul for his, his, his great work on continuing to map this out and also to project, as best as that's possible, enrollment going forward, pre-K through 12. And you can see where we're sitting right now for the 2019-20 school year, 3,232 students. You'll see that in that, in that table. Also, as part of this conversation around enrollment, at least beginning last year, I know, and certainly something that I think is equally important to spend a moment to take a glimpse at, and that is what is the grade eight to nine retention rate. And so you'll see the memo in there from me. Thank you to Molly Dickerson here at the high school, C T L for School Counseling, who's helped put this information together. They, they track more at a, at a deeper level where our students who are not traveling from the middle school across town to the high school end up. And you can see an overview of the past few years, to the class of 2018, class of 2019, 20, and so on. The, there's not a deeper dive of information that, and some members of the committee, a great question, why is it that students might be pursuing a private school education? Or why is it that they might be attracted to the tech? That information is not gathered or specifically, it's just where they are going. So you can see, you know, most recently, class of 2018, for example, there were 300 students in the class of that eighth grade. 69 students chose to leave, 50 went to the tech, 19 went to private schools. So it sort of lays it out. You can see that snapshot. The other question that emerged recently with this is how do we compare to other school districts or surrounding districts? Also a great question. That's not specific information that is tracked. I suppose it certainly would be possible to analyze that through the Department of Education's data. Again, the official enrollment from year to year, we, we don't do that typically, and I would suggest that would vary greatly for lots of different reasons, not just the cohort of students, but also town to town, you know? But nevertheless, I think it's important to know, I know it's on the minds of some of the members of the committee, as is the case throughout the community. And so it gives you a snapshot of that as well, too. So with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
I think that I was most interested in like those two outlier years when it was the students leaving eighth grade was up in the 30s, because for the other, the other years, it was holding fairly steady in the low 20s with very little variation. And, and then you sort of have those two, the, the class of 21 and 22, 32% and 33.8%. And, I mean, again, they may just be outliers. You can't always go in and find out, you know, what, what was happening those years in order to, in order to, to figure that out. But, but those outliers were definitely, definitely curious to me, as well as just the reduction, especially I think in the last, over the last year, it looked like the size of the district was about 150 students smaller from 2018, from 1718 to 1819. And it didn't seem that it was because more students were leaving, at least in the eighth grade leaving, but just kind of like small reductions. I mean, it's probably more just a town demographic issue, which of course we don't really have any control over as a, as a school district, how many school-aged children are in the town. But it definitely, since we're also going to discuss later the building implications and the MSBA, that thinking about the building consolidation and whether we're using our resources efficiently. Because the trend is clearly that our enrollment, you know, I mean, at its high point, at least in this report, was up in the 3,800 students and we're now down to 3,200. It's a significant reduction.
And there are some, when you look at this, you know, certainly are some bubbles, if you, we tend to use that term, larger years. And we'll, in, in our planning, that you'll soon see, the December 18th meeting around projections for class sizes, we're, you know, trying to make those adjustments and we'll recommend that to you. There's certainly, as, as it stands right now, a much smaller incoming sixth-grade class moving into, into the middle school by a significant number of students. But, you know, you take a look at the year behind that and then that'll, that'll bounce back. So we're, we're monitoring, monitoring these numbers, trying to adjust as part of the enrollment plan, or sort of the staffing planning for going forward. But anyway, all, all information for, certainly for, for your, your consumption and review.
Mr. Fennelly?
I don't, I don't know if we do, and I don't know if the information would be helpful if we did have it, but we're obviously tracking the amount of students who are leaving after eighth grade to go elsewhere. Do we know if there are any who, say for ninth grade, go to the tech or go to a private school and then come back for 10th grade or, or on? I mean, I don't know that that information necessarily is helpful, but are we losing some of them for a year and then getting some of them back if they're not happy elsewhere? I, it just kind of dawned on me now, I don't know if that's something that we track or-
It's a great question. I'm not, I'm really not sure. I can certainly find out.
Thank you.
Mr. Samaha?
I guess my, my question was when a student chooses to go to the tech or to a private school, and I think you, you mentioned this, too, but is there, is there a way to do some sort of survey of eighth-grade students or parents when they're leaving and about what their choices are so that we can sort of figure out, you know, what is, what is the reason? What's the biggest reason that a student is going to go to a private school over Wilmington High School or the tech? I think that would be helpful information to have. You know, and I, you know, I, I think the numbers that, that bother me the most are not necessarily, not necessarily the students going to the tech, but students choosing a private school. You know? So even if you take a look at 2023, you know, that was 5.1% going to private schools. It's still a, I think, a pretty high number, and that's sort of the number that I, I would like to see, you know, is there a comparable town to us and how many of their students are going to private schools? You know, just as, as some sort of comparison?
Yeah. Mrs. Burns?
The other thing that you bring up is, do we ever watch, because of the number of transitions we have here in district, how many fifth graders are, are coming into the middle school or, as opposed to, you know, and how many are maybe going elsewhere for their middle school years? I, because I, I'd be interested in, you know, as a collectively, you know, finding out, you know, from one number from both sides, if we're losing any on that end, which might be contributing to our lower class number. And then we go through another loss when that, we've always, we've always had a percentage going to the tech from eighth to ninth grade. That's usually been our biggest, you know, we've always gotten that hit. And I think the smallest time we've seen that transition was when we opened up the new high school. But I would be interested in that transition as well.
Yeah, to my knowledge, I don't think we track that, do we?
Well, if you look at the enrollment report, the 10-year enrollment history-
Yeah.
There's a, right under 2019-20 is a three-year cohort, cohort survival average.
Okay.
So that, so if you look at example, sixth grade, it says 99%.
Yeah.
So on average, over the last three years, we read 99% of fifth graders have gone on to sixth grade.
Okay.
That's how that works.
I see how, okay.
You know, so it's, you can see by looking at that line, it's, sometimes it's, you know, 102%. Well, that means some, some students moved into the town or what have you. And you see the, you know, the ninth grade is lowest, which is, the three-year average is 71%. If you do look down a little bit from there- If you do look down a little bit from there, I think if it's colored, it'll be in the yellow box, it says 2019-20, the retention rate appears to be 79% for 1920. So in that scenario, what happened is, we kept 79% of the last year's eighth graders went to ninth grade this year. And below that, you can see what, you know, we did, the two years under, the 67%. So that's the two years we've been talking about, that we lost a lot of students. And I think, you know, the number that go to Shawshene are right around the same. It's kind of the private school set, you know.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Rockston.
I'll just add on that the, the number, I mean, the students, that students are going to go to the tech after ninth grade is no surprise, and, you know, as some might sort of say, it's, you know, not a, not a flaw, it's a feature. I mean, the, the reason we belong to the Shawshene Tech District is so that students will have the opportunity for the programs that they offer that we don't offer at the high school. And so, I mean, as long as that, I guess that number doesn't get out of hand, that's not, not something to be concerned about or surprised about. I mean, there's a reason that the town has chosen to belong and to give students the opportunity for, for, for that programming. So I think that the, you know, people who are leaving for other reasons besides, it's perfectly understandable why some students are going to the tech for high school. The, the thing that I think we need to look at is why people would be leaving the district for other reasons. Essentially, any other reason is something that is, is worth thinking about, but not that reason.
The other, just the last piece I'll draw upon, and it's all relevant to this discussion, I think, and that is that what's the student retention rate from eighth to ninth grade? Now, we, it's, it's a little bit easier to contend with the class size, or the adjustments, sorry, for staffing at the elementary school. But if these numbers hold, not looking too, too far out, you can see that this school is going to drop by a considerable number of students. And, you know, that would have to 24, 25, again, these are estimations, but that retention rate could, could make quite a, an impact on dropping from just over 800 students to slightly over 700. And I think that, that's certainly something that, as a, as a committee and as administration, we, we want to be thinking about and mindful of in terms of how are we responding to that? Because, you know, as we try and adjust for staffing and, and very limited resources, what does that look like? And I, and it's not something, you know, by any means to talk about now or as a part of the budgetary planning going forward, but I do, there's, there's a, there's a nexus to this conversation around eighth, ninth grade.
Could I ask you a question on that point? At what time, I think my interest is, how many students per classroom would you start with that conversation get real?
That's a tough question.
Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
And it's even more tricky at the high school level where you're looking at department. It's very different, of course, than approaching the third grade population spread out over a bit, you know, and you have class size guidelines, of course, as you know. So it becomes a more nuanced question, but it's, it's the only reason I added to this mix is, is it's something to be mindful of and watching going forward. Again, not for, I would suggest, not for fiscal year '21 or longer term, but I think you're asking great questions. I think you've yielded some other areas that we might be able to circle through the wagons to explore a little bit more. And hopefully, you know, it's, you know, hopefully that number of leaving continues to dwindle, and more kids are staying because they want to stay and families want to stay in Wilmington, so.
I have a question. Is there a healthy percentage? I mean, obviously, there's going to be a drop. What are we looking for? This is not 79, but are you looking for 85, 90? What, what are you hoping for?
I don't, that's, I'm not sure that there's an answer for that. But I do think that that more, especially as we see some of the grades drop, if that, if that 20, 25% are departing stays its course, that has the potential to impact, you know, what staffing needs are. And that has an impact on what program offerings has, you know? So there's a, there's a fine balance. I don't think there's a right number.
Okay.
You know, certainly, you could look at other districts. I don't doubt nearby, and, and that retention rate is probably 5%. You know, that there's, there's some districts that we're close by who have very few kids going to tech schools, very few, single digits. You know, so to compare and to say that there should be a number, I certainly would not suggest that, but, so that's why I think it becomes tricky to compare, you know, our district to others and how do we stand, because I think there's so many layers to that.
Variables, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it's my bad. The other piece is, as Mr. Ragsdale said, there's a certain number of students that are going to go to Shawshene Tech regardless. And, you know, if we look at right now, the current fifth grade class is 210 students. So if it's 40 or 50 students naturally go to Shawshene Tech, that retention rate from fifth to sixth is going to be pretty low. I mean, from, at some point, it's going, it's going to be pretty low, just because, I mean, if that 210 falls through to eighth grade, and then, you know, from eighth to ninth, you have a certain number that every year go to the tech, and that, you know, that retention rate could be, you know, very low. But it, but on a number of student basis, it's the same number of students year to year that, that kind of go to the tech. So it is difficult. I mean, just looking at, you know, the numbers for the past few years, I think 81% retention was our highest retention from eighth to ninth grade. It's been typically in the, in the 70s, other than the two outliers, that was 67%.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Good. Thank you, that's great, thanks. And next, we have a very exciting proposal, which I'm sure you've all seen. Here we have a proposal for the naming of the Wilmington High School Music Room. And in your packets, we have a request from Mr. Jeff Cranford to name the Wilmington High School Music Room after Ms. Barbara Meddy. And does anyone want to read the letter? I don't have to read the letter. Does anyone want to read the letter? Do you want to read the letter? You read the letter. Tired of hearing my voice, hear someone else's voice.
Ms. Bryson, I'm sure that I don't need to list for this committee the accomplishments, the dedication, and the gifts brought to the Wilmington Public Schools by Ms. Barbara Meddy. Anyone who has worked with her or had their kids impacted by her work over the years knows how incredibly she has served us. As a small gesture, I'd like to ask the school committee that they request of the select persons that an article be placed on the warrant of the next town meeting. The request contained in the article would be to name and dedicate the music room in the Wilmington High School in Ms. Meddy's honor. If this were a piece of legislation, I'd list my co-sponsors' names here. Suffice to say that everyone to whom I've reached out so far has been fully supportive of this. When this has been favorably disposed, I will lead an effort to fund a suitable plaque or nameplate of a design approved by the school committee or anyone they designate, which can then be mounted so that the town and the school will not hear the cost of this. Jeff Cranford.
Mr. Cran.
And since, since I read the letter, I will say that I personally, Ms. Meddy is one of the very few teachers who's still with the system, who taught while I was in school, so I am in, fully in support of this. She has most certainly given us many, many years of dedicated service.
Absolutely. Mrs. Burns.
If anybody saw the production that she put on when we named the auditorium after Joanne Betten, I think it's without doubt, the hard work, it, the way that she has revered amongst parents, I, I just, I think this is just the most, most suitable request that I would wholeheartedly and absolutely support.
Any other discussion? Mr. Small.
I can't agree enough. My, both my kids have played in the band, and my son this year is a sub-freshman in the marching band, and like she, what she does with those kids is, is amazing, and she's been doing it for, for a few years.
For some time.
You know, and I, I think this is, I think she's an amazing, amazing educator, and I fully support this.
I agree. I think it's a great honor, and I'm so happy that Mr. Cranford brought it to our attention so quickly. Is Mr. Cranford here?
Yes.
You are? I thought that might be you.
And I agree with every word now.
I should have had you read the letter. I didn't, I thought you might be sitting there, but I wasn't sure. It's very nice to meet you, and thank you very much for writing this.
Thank you for your help with this. Obviously, going into it, I did not know the process, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that people are supportive of it. If it was up to me, I'd name the whole school after.
Thank you for being here.
By the way, I was at camp with your son this year.
Oh, yeah? I'm sorry.
It's all right, everybody got through.
My only objection to this is that if we name the music room after her and do this plaque, then we have to accept that she's actually retiring.
That's true. I know.
I don't want to do that.
Very sad, very hard. It's my favorite part of going to the football game. I love the football, but it's, just listening to the band is, well, I'm actually not a sports fan, but going, going to the football games and listening to the band is just pretty incredible for, for all of us who've been able to enjoy it over the years. So thank you, Mr. Cranford. And the motion, would someone like to read the motion? Mrs. Burns?
I would like to move to approve the placement of an article on the warrant of the next town meeting to name and dedicate the music room at Wilmington High School in Mrs., excuse me, Ms. Barbara Meddy's honor.
Is there a second? Mr. Fenely? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Very exciting. All right, moving right along, we have our school improvement plan, middle, middle school principal, Alexander Phillips, and team, maybe? All right, come on up. Did you want to say anything or not?
No, except to point out, if you haven't seen, at your, at your seat, there is an updated plan. I know that, you know that this was emailed to you, this will get incorporated into the full packet, school committee packet, as it's reposted, but supplemental copy is at your, at your spot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Nice to be here.
Thank you for being here.
All right, so let's see if we're doing this correctly.
Yeah.
There we go. All right, so far, so good. So hi.
Hi.
Thank you. We're excited to share with you our school improvement plan. With me tonight is Dr. Janet Quirk and Mr. Dan Fairclough, our assistant principals. And I'll be walking us through the plan. Hopefully periodically I'll stop and, and if there are questions, but certainly jump in as well along the way. All right. So the first, this is our, basically our cover sheet here, so this gives the data about the school, the most current data that's in the Mass D O E website. It gives you a sense of who's also contributed directly to the plan as well. This is a little update as to what the school improvement plan looked like last year, and sort of our progress on the three objectives that we had last year. We won't go through all the pieces in it, but a lot of the pieces here informed sort of where we are now and how we shaped the plan for this year, sort of picking up on things that we worked on last year, addressing some things that maybe we didn't get to complete in the previous plan. Is there anything you guys want to add on to this? Okay. So we had three goals, and we want to come to this year. So this year, just to sort of shape how we went about creating our school improvement plan for this year. First, that was really important to us was that our goals align specifically with the district's goals. And so we, we looked at this district strategic plan, and that, we wanted to make sure that we were fitting in, or at least applying the, the district's goals to the school. The second thing that we did, we looked at sort of key data metrics that we had. So we looked at M-CAS data, we looked at some of the reading data of children that were coming up as fifth graders and where they were coming from. We looked at the resources that we had in the school and how we could best maximize them. We also looked at the walk-up report. And so some of the things I heard earlier, talking about, you know, how do we create tiered interventions and so forth, that was something that influenced our thought process. So our first goal is around reading. And actually, the other piece that I would say, too, is we also looked at sort of in a, kind of a, on the theme of what you're talking about, how do we address all the various things we want to get to? How do we start to prioritize? And one of the things we also said is, reading is, you know, the most important skill, so let's look at that first for kids to, to come out of the middle school. So taking all those pieces together, our goal here is to build a system of tier two and tier three reading interventions designed specifically to address the needs of students who are not yet reading at benchmark levels in reading. And from all of those, that's how we got to here. The, the piece that I think I want to talk about is also the, when we talk about the resource, we have four reading teachers already in the middle school. And so one of the pieces that we felt that we weren't doing was utilizing them as best as possible to address in, to fill in in a tier two and tier three way, you know? So when kids were struggling, maybe we weren't matching them best to the resources that we had in the building. So if you look at the activities or the initiatives on the, on the sideline, I can walk briefly through that, but our, our goal here is to, one, build a common assessment that we're going to be looking at, that's benchmarked, sort of like a normed benchmark, to take a look at, sort of see where our kids are right now. To build that assessment calendar so that we're taking a look at, monitoring kids' progress throughout the school year, so we're testing them periodically is where we want to get The second piece, or the third piece, is looking at mapping, and I think this came up earlier in the conversation, and I think MJ, this was, was your, your point, how are we making sure that when we identify kids that have needs, how are we mapping them to getting the resources specifically that they need to match their particular needs within that? And then making sure that we have a flow chart, that we're going to be able to monitor the progress of, of kids as they're going through the system. And then finally, actually doing it. So our end goal is that the, the kids that we identify at the beginning of the, the process, through our benchmarks at the beginning of the, or midway of the year, is by the end of the year, we want to make sure 10% of those kids that we've identified as being deficient are backup to proficiency, grade level proficiency. So let me stop there. What questions do people have?
Mrs. Burns.
So, okay, so the first, I'm just, I think, a little, of course, we go back to time. So there's only two quarters...
Yes.
...that you're allowing once every, how, how is this disseminated with staff? Because at, by the end of the second quarter, which we will be approaching, then we have only two quarters left to target. I mean, I know, I think it's a, I think it's a very reasonable measure for 10%, hopefully as, maybe by, as next year comes and we, we have these things established, we can increase that measure by outcome. But I, just to ensure that staff, you know, that process of identifying, setting up a plan of action for these kids, implementing that plan of action with the amount of time that the students have with the literacy staff, what's the likelihood that by the end of the fourth quarter, with, you know, vac, school vacations, M-CAS testing, that that, that that would be a reasonable expectation, I guess? Like, I'm just asking...
Great question.
You know, with all the roadblocks that you guys have to jump over to get to that point.
So this is debate, actually, that we had, even up to today, we were debating this and saying, do we feel comfortable with, with this number? I think a couple of things. The, this plan really focuses, as I think you alluded to, setting up systems and maps in place, right? So what is going to be our system to make sure that we do have interventions that match kids' needs? Secondly, the, the other piece is, we really are, we're not talking a school-wide initiative. We're talking a very targeted initiative that, in essence, really only involves the changing of the allocation and the strategy, or the usage of four people in the building, four reading specialists. So we're not talking a grand thing of changing all of reading instruction across the building. We're talking about how are we utilizing these four people and how are we maximizing them, and how are we building a system that we can then run more efficiently and better to scale in the future? So your, your point there is right on, that, you know... So, your point there is right on that, you know, this is essentially a pilot year to get us a baseline and to get us sort of practicing these strategies, and that we hope over time, we become more and more efficient by becoming better at it.
I think that's great. I think, I do, I think that's a great, and I think it's a great start. I guess, I'm also trying, in saying that, I understand it, these kids have to bring what they're trying to learn at that level into their other classes, which reading and understanding and comprehension and processing, all that has to be utilized. So, I guess, seeing it in a bigger picture, yes, it happens in this kind of small group, but it's, it also impacts them in the other class, you know? And so, I didn't, and so, I kind of was thinking, and maybe I'm thinking too broadly, and maybe I'm in the cart before the horse, Kenny Gal, which I am, but how do we support them in those other classes where reading, in those areas of retainment, after, how does that, you know, ball over to those other classes that they do, like math, for instance, you know, social studies, sciences, where their reading skills also impact how they learn in those programs? So, I'm trying to see how that may connect. I know how it connects with reading, but if you can just kind of give me a broader understanding.
So, what we found this year is that we have some great reading teachers that are telling us that they can do more.
Oh, okay.
So, that's a nice, that's a nice thing. And they're telling us how they want to do it, all right? And so, what we're seeing, even in our sixth grade, we have that exploratory thing that we do with the reading, we're finding a lot of positive things from the parents, like the love, the energy, and the reading is starting to get like a real positive feeling to it. So, when you say, how is that going to translate? It's translating by, I'm seeing it through emails from parents, like, this is the first time my son, this is the first time my daughter, I'm seeing a lot of that. So, what you do is, if you lower some of those obstacles, and reading isn't such a pool, and they like it, it's going to naturally, it's going to naturally flow over. And we have very enthusiastic reading teachers right now that are, we also can tell that they want to be a big part of this.
Right.
And so, we have a team, we have a vision, and I think it will, it will spill over everywhere. And it will, it'll roll into math because it's, math is a lot of reading in math. So, I'm very, very optimistic with the people we're working with on this.
Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Maxton?
Two things I want to ask about. The first is, can you describe what specifically is going to be different in this approach from what is happening right now, from what the current approach is to reading intervention? I mean, I don't know if it's that we don't have common assessments, or the, you know, the reading intervention's in place, I mean, obviously, we have some interventions. But can you describe what's, what's different and why we think that this is going to be better?
So, the common assessments, I would also say that we're going to use more externally normed common assessments. Right now, we have been piloting something called iReady, and it's, it allows for much more nuanced diagnostic of where kids' needs are. So, each kid will get a profile from assessing that. That's different than, say, having a common assessment that our teacher generated, or that might be different from grade level to grade level. This is a common tool that all people can, all teachers can be using, and that we can use to give us consistent data across the whole school. So, that would be one way that would be different in terms of the type of assessment that we're looking at. The second thing would be, how are we utilizing and providing interventions for students? So, for example, right now, let's just take our sixth grade. Right now, every sixth grader has a quarter of reading class. So, it's, every kid gets it. And our thinking is, that's, that's good, and it's great for all kids to have reading, but that means that kids who maybe have more of a need, who are maybe struggling a bit more, are not getting the additional boost beyond that, or that we're not targeting the use of the reading specialist, we're sort of distributing them among everybody, and instead, what we want to do is dump them more of their time and their resources on the kids who are not yet at proficient levels in reading. So, this is a strategy that we are making choices. We're saying that the choice that matters for us is that if kids are not yet at benchmark, and they are in the sixth grade in Wilmington Middle School, that is a problem for us, and that's our highest priority. And so, we're putting the resources to address those kids first before perhaps we might have a general reading class for everybody. So, those are maybe two examples of both on a diagnostic and then how that might look in practice based off of the data that we get.
Okay. Thanks. The second thing that I wanted to ask about is the measurable outcome of success. So, the, I think that there's, that having, you know, a goal of 10%, I'm sure there's lots of debate about what's the right number, that you're, whenever you try to put a number on something like this, you're always trying to find something that, you know, is, you know, sufficiently ambitious but achievable, and, you know, not some pie in the sky number. You know, you try to say, you know, say, oh, we're going to get 100%, you know, people on grade level, you know, in one year, and you're just setting yourself up for failure. But what I think is, to me, missing in this goal is at least some recognition or acknowledgement of, even if we're not getting up to grade level, that for the other 90% that aren't captured in this, that we still want to see some action, some level of improvement. It feels to me that this is missing a, some kind of progress goal for the rest of the students targeted for intervention. That, you know, currently is written that if 10% of the students were at grade level, and then the other students, you know, the remaining 90 students who have been receiving all these same interventions, have made no progress or even regressed, and that this benchmark is met, but I don't think we would consider that a good outcome.
That's a fair criticism. And I think that's a good point, and that might necessitate some revision of the goal. I think that that's a really good point. I think for us, you know, right now, we don't have any real data one way or the other, and this is kind of like, how are we going to put a stake in the ground? And frankly, I think the thing that is, and I don't want to say that this was done haphazardly, but the thing that was more important to us about this year was building the systems in place, meaning figuring out the maps, figuring out if we have, you know, how often are we going to assess kids? If a kid is at this level of reading, does that mean we're progress monitoring more frequently or less frequently? What are going to be the pathways of interventions, and how are we going to keep track of that? That, to us, was the more important piece. And so, in some ways, this is kind of, let's see where we are. But I think your point is very well taken, and I think that's one that we would go back to our team and really think about, how are we looking at all the kids and making sure all kids are progressing, and maybe it needs to be rewarded in a way that is more in keeping with that spirit? So, thank you, that's good feedback.
And I think that the, I think the scenarios that I mentioned would be very unlikely, because if they're all getting the intervention, then, you know, it's like, oh, these 10% students, it's working great, and like, no one else is, you know, it's working for. Would be, would be a very unlikely outcome.
But I think we could look at it in a range of ways, and maybe more nuanced than this. Sort of, this is somewhat of a simplistic goal, but I think we could look at it more nuanced in terms of the overall, you know, what's the overall rate, and what's the percentage we're seeing there, what's the average for each kid, that type of thing, yeah. I think, I think that's a good point. So, thank you. That's really helpful.
You're good? Okay.
That's a very good point.
Okay. The next plan, is this one, yes? The next goal was around social emotional support. And so, this is something that I think really builds on previous goals and previous work that both Principal Welsh and Dan and Jeanette have been doing. And it is looking somewhat, sort of in contrast to what we were just talking about, it's sort of more fine-tuned tier two and tier three for literacy, this is going the other direction and looking at tier one, sort of like, what's our baseline work around social emotional learning that we're doing for all kids, and where are we seeing that, and where are they all getting? Right now, in some ways, it kind of feels like we're doing a real good, or a lot of our job is spent on, you know, working with kids sort of after the fact or in a reactive way, and so, we want to think more proactively, or add more proactively to what we've been doing. And so, I think some of the work of the last few years has been putting in pieces of that, and we really want to continue on that, you know, universal work around social emotional learning. So, that, part of what we already started was this idea around launchpads, which we began at the beginning of the year, which we shared with you. But the idea here is, how are we creating opportunities for kids and adults to interact in sort of small, meaningful groups beyond just, hey, we're here for math, or science, or English, but that there is opportunities for us to get to know each other as human beings, and that the relationships are what really matter and help kids, especially in the, in the sort of socially awkward and transitionary, transitory time of middle school. And some of the thing, and then in that time, we're focusing specifically on social emotional learning, which we didn't necessarily have a space for that within the coursework that we've had previously. We're continuing with some other tier one curricular things, Mark, Choose to be Nice, these are programs that have started under previous leadership, and we'll continue. We want to, and this, this is the harder part, of, we want to be choosing one or two strategies for social emotional learning that will be universal across the school. This is going to be hard, because that means everybody has to be doing it, and how do we train everybody? But one thing that sort of you heard earlier was around the D cap, and, you know, there's so many things there, you know, there's a lot that can be overwhelming for teachers. So, what we want to do is sort of look at D cap sort of for an SEL, and just say, all right, here's one strategy that we're all going to commit to. Something small, something but meaningful, that we can say that we have a plan as a school, that if you said, what is our SEL plan? Come in and see in every classroom when it's happening, so that every kid can get it. And then, the last piece that's really important for us, and this is a hard piece that we've also sort of debated, is how, how are we going to measure? Like, we talk a lot about social emotional learning, and, but when we say that, and when you come, you know, say, come to me and say, all right, how are we doing in the school? What's the data that I'm going to give back to you? What's, what's the benchmark that we're going to be able to say? We've chosen this, this is the criteria that we're going to look at, and this is how we're going to measure progress. And again, this is a sort of a stake in the ground kind of year of, let's put together what pieces that we think we should go in there and name them, so it may be, something like the Youth Risk Behavior Survey might be part of our data pool, that we can say, hey, let's look at how we did the last year or this year. But somewhere, we need to put some stake in the ground, say, this is the data that we want to collect, and that we want to use to measure our growth around social emotional learning. So, that's another big piece for us. Questions?
Just a quick question.
Please.
Excuse me. I apologize. So, within this goal, I think it's great, I like, I think I understand the approach. So, at what point do we, are we able to see the successful outcomes of students executing the lessons they've learned? I mean, we're giving it to them, I know you're getting the feedback from the classroom teachers, and you're formulating this, but at what point in these schools, which I think is the end result, as to how it impacts our students? Well, how will we, how or when will we see those type of outcomes? You know, those, those measures as to how many students successfully know the SEL, the SELL initiatives that they're being taught?
Sure.
And are executing them consistently, or, I mean, I don't know, are there any, middle school's such a huge building, but are there any initiatives maybe to support that learning and that, and this goal within the school? I'm just trying to, it's great to give it, but.
Hard thing to measure.
Well, exactly.
That's our discussion that we're working on, is finding some of those things that are measurable. Some, we're going to be able to do by attendance, maybe it could be visits to the nurse's office. It could, we have, that's going to be the hard part, to dial in, it could be student surveys. So, that's going to be.
It's like, how do we know we are successful, or we're making progress with success?
And that's what we have to find.
Yeah, okay.
And we have some ideas on, some of them I just shared a little bit about it, but we're not in 100% agreement, to be completely honest. We're trying to, we're trying to gauge them, and we'll take input from people, because how do you measure how happy or successful a student is in school? You know, we can measure it by reductions in certain things, or, you know, increases in attendance rates, and we can look at them, but that's, that's going to be the hard work part of getting, getting those, those metrics to measure this.
It's finding that baseline, you know, how many are reporting stomach aches, or frequent, you know, as you said, frequent flyers. The nursing attendances is another thing.
Right.
It's finding, I think it's starting with those basics, and then probably building upon it and expanding upon it, because it really, it's not just a curriculum piece, this is really a physiological, mental health aspect that impacts the learning. So, you're really, you're not just dealing with an education, dealing with a mental health, medical, you know, piece. It is a tricky.
Our guidance counselors, our nurses, you know, it's going to be a.
Sticky wick.
It's going to be an interesting conversation.
With PBIS as well, the committee will be, one of the things that we want to accomplish this year is to find a way that we can acknowledge students as well, much like you've heard in the younger schools with the PAWS, PoW, as I call them. We hope to have a system that does that as well. So, you know, where we can say, this child has been resilient in how, and recognize that child, and track that information.
Staff, too, maybe, something to consider.
And staff as well.
I think that role modeling piece is so huge, especially in this realm.
So, that's a piece of it as well.
Something to think about, yeah. Thank you.
But I agree with you, and I think we're on the same page in terms of, how do we, how do we track this? How do we say, how do we define success, in essence, or how do we find growth? And that's something that I think we really do need to nail down.
Well, I don't think you're going to nail it down, but I think it's something that, because it's an ever, it's an ever-moving.
But be able to define.
Yeah.
Be able to define, and we work off of that, and it'll change over time, you know, as we realize, oh, we have this type of information, but we're missing this type. So, how do we, how do we track that type?
Thank you.
Well, I think one piece, parents know, right, how happy their kids are. So, parent surveys, and I see the next goal has a lot to do with parent engagement. And so, I feel like that, if that's something you're really focusing on, then you have a good sense of how happy the kids are based on what they're telling their parents when they go home.
Yes.
Thank you.
You anticipate, so thank you for leading us to our third.
They're leading us along and making a point.
Nice job, nice job. So, this actually came from, this goal really came from conversations that we've had with parents, it came from talking with our parent advisory council, and, you know, just a lot of sort of the, the conversation really came around, my child is going into middle school, I'm getting less communication from my kid in many ways, he's become middle schoolers, and how was your day? Fine, you know, that type of thing. And, but also, just what's going on, and how do we build that partnership in the middle school? How do we know what's going on? How do we know what the opportunities are? Now that our kids are getting older, there are more differentiated opportunities, and so, what do those look like? So, this goal is really about inviting parents in to a conversation. The first thing that came up, and I should say, our pack came up with a whole host of great ideas, and so, we had to sort of narrow those down to say, all right, what can we achieve this year? And the, the big goal was around parent education, and how do we inform parents as partners as to what's going on in the school, and what they would like to know about what's going on even developmentally with their kids at this age. So, the first part is simply forming a parent education committee that's going to work on that. We would like to have, and we're trying to be modest, one parent education evening event for each of the next two quarters, quarters three and four. And then, something that we hope can, can really, you know, bring a nice personal touch is monthly parent coffees. This is something that I've implemented in the past, and I find it very enjoyable, you know, it's a chance to be human beings together in a low-key environment, but also a chance for us to highlight and to showcase, hey, you know, we have this great robotics program, do you know about it? Let's bring it in, let's have you see what that's about. Or, here's what's going on in Spanish class, you know, this is what the Spanish program's goals are. Things like that, just to bring different elements of the programs that the middle school has.
Bring the Wilmington's in again.
Bring the Wilmington's, you know, and this is what's going on in music. Just so people have a sense and can really begin to sort of wrap their minds around what are their kids' experience at Wilmington Middle School. And then, the last piece was, again, collecting data. And the data that we would like to collect is, how are parents feeling about the school? And that, where is the parent voice that can give us, you know, really positive and constructive feedback? You know, this is what's working well, this is what's not working, and here's our feedback as to what we think could do to improve the school. You know, we don't see it as too complicated of a survey, but something that we would like to, to, to do a, you know, do a baseline for this year, and have something that goes on consistently, so that parents can give us feedback, so that we can get better all the time.
Right.
Anything you want to add? No, that's, okay. Questions on that?
Just mine.
Yes.
Two things. The first is the, like, the parent satisfaction survey.
Yes.
I would suggest maybe, is there a way to add like the percent of return on that of?
You're hitting all our conversations.
Just because I know a lot of times, parent surveys are not, there's not a great return rate on them, so.
That's.
So, here, maybe you could give a suggestion. My argument was for, an argument was, 50% should be our goal, like, that we can get 50%. And I'm not a statistician, so maybe somebody else here is like, at what point is the return rate, an appropriate return rate that the data that we get from it is valid data, right? If you get three surveys, it's really not going to tell you one thing or another, but, and that I don't know. So I think that was kind of why we didn't put a number in there is because we didn't know what that number was, but if somebody could tell us what that number is, that would be great in terms of very good.
I think too, this first time would be a baseline for that.
Sure.
And then we would also have to look at how, how would we get more of that results? And that, that's going to be a challenge. So if we don't get a good number, how do we get more? Because we can't, like you said, I think 50% is, it's not really valid after, you know, under that. So that's, that is our, that's going to be an obstacle. And, you know, you hear through the grapevine all this stuff, but you don't hear it, you know, so it's going to...
That's a lot of coffee too, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Yeah. The other thing too, was the, I think the idea of the morning coffee, I think, is great, but I, but I know for working parents, that's like, for myself and my wife, that we could, that could never happen. We could never go.
I think it would be important to find the right time, just like with administering the survey, like, there's research that shows that some school districts found that like Tuesday nights was the best way to send out a memo, right? Because most parents, they got the return rate of how much was being read. That's sort of some of the data that we're going to have to collect this year, right? And also the coffees and when they would be offered, right? Maybe some of them during the day, some in the afternoon, some in the evening. We found that with the, the parent technology night. We first had them at 3:30 and then we had another one at 7:30 and it doubled the amount of parents that came. So we'll have to find out, one of the surveys would be, when would be the best time for you to come and start offering it at that time.
Yeah, so that was definitely part of the debate.
Yep.
So that, so that you were, and I think the way that we resolved it was that in the earlier slide, we said, we'll have two in the evening and then so then we'll have the, we'll kind of hit that. But that's not, again, this is a trial run in some ways and I could certainly see it being that we have, you know, coffee this month in the morning and whatever, we decaf coffee this month in the evening, you know, something along those lines. But yeah, that's something we have to figure out. Do we know it? Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Mr. Haxton?
I think that this is a, a nice and thoughtful approach to this issue, which has been an ongoing issue with the, with the middle school, both that we have, you know, goals for the type of participation we get. I mean, it kind of goes a little bit to the issue you were just saying about like, at what point do we consider this a successful initiative? Like, how much participation is, you know, is enough? And for the, you know, survey data is of course different from how many people are showing up to the coffees or to the quarterly, the quarterly meetings. But that's, you know, that is, that is one of the tricks is kind of, you know, getting, getting people in a way that they can actually, you know, make it. It's like if, as convenient, as convenient as we can make it for them, and I think that's part of the trial and error of just like, well, what, what enables them to actually come in and do that? If it was super easy, then probably lots of people would do it and we have to, you know, meet them, meet them in the real world.
Yeah.
I think that the, you know, there's also again, an art to the survey and sort of finding not just when they get it, but how, how in-depth do you go? That, you know, you're trying to always find that Goldilocks point of, if it's too in-depth, people just abandon it. It's just like, no, I don't have 20 minutes to go through all of this or we've sort of all had that feeling of doing a survey and you kind of feel hoodwinked that like, survey promises it won't take very long and then suddenly you find out that there's, you know, 35 more questions and 10 more pages and you just feel like you were suckered into it. But of course, if you ask like two questions, you're not getting very much data. And so I think there's going to have to be trial and error going on for, for a lot of these things. You know, the whole issue of how to measure these soft things, whether it's, it's like, how do you measure that you have good communication? You know, how do you measure that your students are, you know, emotionally and socially healthy? To some extent, you just have to ask people, which is why the, the surveys are valuable. But, you know, there's also just a little bit of, of an art to it and, you know, I think we also need to be a little bit careful that you don't get so desperate for like data at all costs that you end up finding measurements that don't really tell you very much. And, and so it's, again, it's always that tough balance between it's like, all right, you know, attendance tells us something, but how much does it tell us about how happy or healthy the, the students are? And, you know, and there are a lot of other things like that. I would suggest the school climate survey is one possible option. That's administered annually by the state and that that would be one thing. That kind of goes back more to the SEL than to the communication. But I think this is a nice and good, nice and detailed approach to trying to get that communication going. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
I just have one comment, so thank you for this. I just, looking at the SEL, I see the choose to be nice, obviously the mark, and then looking, choose to be nice has its own values and we've been working really hard on trying to sort of support the, the core values that we've established as a strategic plan, which you said you were, you were definitely using as you created your school improvement plan. So I just wondered, well, just not even a question, but just to sort of think about the values that the strategic planner outlined, how that fits in with PBIS, all the other initiatives, because I feel as though students are probably hearing a lot of different words and some that are very similar. And so sometimes just saying, this is what it says in circle and here's how it looks in choose to be nice, but I just want to make sure some of that's happening.
And we are working across the different teams to align them the best that we can, you know, to use the common words that go with our core values when we're talking about anything else that could apply, like in choose to be nice, there's nine. So, right, so, but just trying to make sure that they're all aligned.
And they all connect, I mean, it'd be a neat activity, right, to say, this is the circle and how does this connect? I mean, I don't think it means you can't do it, I just sort of, but to do it and then to not pay any attention to the circle, it's, right? So I think, so thank you, I appreciate that.
One thing I just do want to comment about, Dr. Quirk was primarily the leader of the work with our launchpads in terms of the work there. And I think one of the things that was really important of the work was being very explicit in the lessons to talk about the values, to really use those words so that, so that they became the foundation, so it wasn't sort of this abstract idea, but that they could see, this is what, you know, respect looks like in this field or in this domain or, you know, how do we actualize these terms that maybe exist up here and how do they look like in behaviors and how do they look like in interactions? And I think that was something...
Interject with an example that, that I was really pretty impressed with, because one of them was the fire drills. And it was, it was done, we've been doing fire drills for years and the feedback from some of the teachers and everything, it really wasn't respectful. They said the kids were loud, they weren't paying attention. So we kind of met as a team and we said, this isn't what was part of that curriculum. So we said, we're going to do a re-rack. And we literally did a re-rack and we posted ourselves in different positions, talked to the teachers and the kids were a thousand times better on the, on the re-rack. So they heard the message, they knew it was important. We reinforced it. We didn't just say, yeah, that was all right, we got it done. We did it again because it was important, because they weren't really following...
It was a violation of our values that we had made out and so we needed to call them on it.
It was, I thought it was a good sign of where we were headed, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, good point.
They do hear you is what my point.
I have a couple more points, sorry.
I thought I did.
This is, this is good feedback.
One thing on the first goal, just because I hadn't noticed it before, just because I noticed on the third one, it talked about funds for parent coffee as an additional resource. Thinking about, on the, so on the first one, a common reading assessment, would you, would that be something that would be purchased if you're talking about sort of a computerized, normed thing? Would that be something that would be added to that as well?
Yes, so here, here's, here's where we stand with that. So the district has purchased for this year a common assessment for us to be, that we can use across. What I think we want to be intentional about is feeling very confident that that is the right assessment. It's sort of was something that kind of grew from, oh, one group of teachers really liked it and the next, and we want to be really, you know, thoughtful and say that yes, we drilled down on it. And right now, I don't have any contrary indications of that. But yes, there will be a cost and it will be a cost going forward. Not an insurmountable cost, so I think that's doable within the budget parameters that we, that we have. There, there is potentially some costs for other types of intervention materials and as we get more nuanced and as the reading interventionists would like, you know, more of this and more of that, yeah, I mean, there is going to be a cost, like there would be a cost in any time that you're adding to, you know, additional curriculum or additional curricular resources. Fortunately, we, we have, I would say, very highly skilled reading inter, reading specialists right now. And in essence, they bring their curriculum with them, right? So they don't need, and forgive me for saying this, but they don't really need additional materials right now, need need. Like, they can do their job without it. And we're very lucky to be in that situation. Could we benefit? Yes. But are we, is this whole thing going to fall apart if we don't get additional funding or don't have the resources? No. And, and so I think that is right to point out, but it was built on the idea that we may not have those resources, but we can always benefit from those resources and as we maybe go to bigger scale, we might in future years want to incorporate that into our budget.
Okay. Right. And then just the other thing, the other thing that I just wanted to mention is, this hits on, because I, because both my kids go to the middle school, I talk with other middle school parents, this hits on a lot of areas that I've heard parents complain about the middle school in the past. So I really appreciate that you guys have, it's three major things. It's, I hear people saying, the reading, you know, my kid doesn't get enough reading. I hear parents complaining about, you know, not enough social emotional learning stuff, the bullying and all that sort of stuff. And then, you know, the parents feel like they're out of the loop. So I, I appreciate that the three things that you chose are the three major concerns I hear from, from parents, so.
Thank you.
We're listening.
We're trying.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for being here. I think we are...
And thank you for the feedback.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
Thank you.
And good luck. All right. And that brings us to, oh, oh, sorry, yes. Need a motion to approve. Mrs. Newhouse, second? Mr. Fenelly, thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right. And that brings us to Massachusetts School Building Authority prospective application, Dr. Brand. And I just want to make note that I am actually one minute ahead of my timestamp.
Not anymore, not after you mentioned it.
Which I'm so excited about. And all right, and now we'll continue.
Is that a challenge? You may have just changed yourself.
Just let tonight be the night, please.
How much time do I have? Uh, oh, okay.
Five minutes, so go.
Five minutes, go.
Thank you again to our middle school administrators for being here tonight and presenting that plan and thank you for your questions.
Thank you so much.
The, the next item, item eight, or sorry, 6D Massachusetts School Building Authority or otherwise often referred to as MSBA. You have a memo in here that provides information to you that was put together by Mr. Jeff Hall, town manager, as well as myself. This has been shared respectively with the Board of Selectmen and for the timing of the meeting this evening with you as, as a committee. It's a, I know it's a fairly extensive memo, certainly won't go through all of the parts, but in short, you know that there has been some certainly enhanced focus recently around the state of our buildings, really across town, the public buildings and of course more for our area of interest, the schools. We have an awful lot of needs, really arguably in the, in the six elementary schools that relates to those facilities. And, and so the avenue of MSBA, which is a, for those that are unfamiliar with it, is a, is a grant program that has been established by the state, I'm not sure how long it's been in existence, but for some time. And it partners with school communities slash towns for the infusions of considerable funds to help offset costs with new building, construction or, and/or renovation. They have two specific programs. One's called the Core Program, which is for new building, construction or renovation. And the other is called Accelerated Repair, which deals with really building envelope type issues, windows, ceilings, boilers, those kind of big ticket items. Anyway, to make a longer story short, after much consideration, exploration with those in the field, the architectural building, construction field, if you will, and a deeper dive into understanding the MSBA program, it, it seems abundantly clear that we should as a town make the step forward and submit applications to MSBA for, in fact, not just one school, most frequently of late has been the conversation around the Wildwood School, but in fact, all six elementary schools. The memo tries to outline the statement of interest process and I think this is really an important piece to point out that just because a district or a town steps forward to submit an application of which, as you'll note, and you can find this information really on, on their website, MSBA's website, there's usually well over 100 applications submitted by communities throughout the Commonwealth every year. The total number of projects that are funded varies from year to year, simply because of the nature of those, those particular applications. There could be a $200 million high school project one year and the next year there's not. And so that, that obviously directly impacts how many projects that can actually be funded. Generally speaking, the MSBA only partners with a school or town for one building project at a time. That's an important piece to note. And equally, part of the application process, it only opens, the window, as they, I think they refer to it as, is only opens once per year. It opens in January and closes in April for these core program applications. And in our particular case here in Wilmington, whereas we have, number one, these extensive needs at multiple facilities, as has been pointed out by previous studies, and two, because there's an interest, it would seem, certainly by the public, the building committee, that really pointed us in the direction of building consolidation as opposed to just keeping all eight school facilities. That latter fact is really the piece that drives the thought here around submitting applications for all six schools. And in so doing, also identifying the Wildwood as a priority school. There's a lot more information to this. I know that this is somewhat complex, but in short, after much conversation with, with Paul and with George Hooper and with Jeff Hall, the recommendation respectively to both the Board of Selectmen and to you as the school committee is that you, you know, provide the support for us to move forward, to begin work on completing these applications, six, again, six statement of interest applications in time for the, what will be the April 2020 submission. And we'll go from there. We'll put the best foot forward. There are lots of communities that apply that simply take two, three, four times a try to get, to get into this program. So it's a long, rather challenging, not challenging, but complicated process, but it's one that certainly seems right for us to at least explore at this point in time. And so this evening, seeking your support through a motion to approve the request to begin this process. And with all of that, I'm happy if you have any questions to try and answer.
I have two questions, because I'm a little unfamiliar with, you stated that they, they took on one building project at a time, yet we're submitting six SOIs. Are we throwing a bunch in the pool and see if they pull out the priority one or...
So try and keep this as concise as possible. So how this works, and this goes to the heart of where we're at, this idea of building consolidation. Hypothetically, if, if, if Wilmington was invited into this program, and, and by the way, the, the invitation in is based upon a number of factors, the thoroughness of these applications, and quite honestly, what the MSBA's assessment is of our particular need, how dire are some of our facilities? And, and how do they rank in comparison to the neighboring district that might also be applying, right? It's about the prioritization. But in our particular case, hypothetically, if we were to be invited in, hypothetically, we are identifying the Wildwood as the priority project. It also though indicates that we are open for and expressing a need for other facilities. And in so doing, that leaves open the door for possible building consolidation. In other words, taking the Wildwood and joining that with another facility in a, in, in new construction or renovation. If we didn't do that and if we just applied for the Wildwood, if the Wildwood was invited in, we would have to stick to that school and that school only. We couldn't say, oh, and by the way, we have an interest in joining Wildwood with whatever the other school is north. Can we do that? the other school is north, can we do that? The, the understanding of the regulations is no, we couldn't. So we kind of closed doors, whereas if we're submitting applications for six schools, it keeps possibilities open. And the important thing to note for all of us, and for those members of the community might be watching this, is you might jump to the conclusion to say, we need to have everything figured out, what the path forward is. In fact, that's not exactly the case, and MSBA likes to partner with communities to help explore the possibilities. What these applications essentially state is, we have, we feel an abundance of need in our facilities, and if you consider partnering with us, that would be a good thing in the end.
So this would, so by understanding, this would be really one big building project, because in that process of creating a new building, there'll be transitions to, well, that's transition, we're trying to minimize the transitions through the, this project, yes?
It's quite possible, but they would explore that, and that, just an important point, not to suggest that this would be a building project, again, in the hypothetical, that would subsume all six, no, likely not.
Well, I'm just thinking.
But, but certainly one, maybe two, maybe three, of which Wildwood is a part of, could evolve through the planning, so.
Well, I know that, I mean, granted that I think further study needs to look into it.
Most certainly, it would have to.
And I, I know we're at least hoping for one new building, that would not just be, you know, Wildwood, Botwell, but, you know.
Yes.
And possible renovations.
Yes.
On the, on the additional, I mean, granted that, so I'm just saying vaguely not to the point, because I know there's a lot of.
Right.
Lot between here and there. But that's good, I just want to make sure, looking at these six SOIs, you know, when you, I hear one building project, this is actually kind of like.
And it could include, it could include multiple buildings. Again, just as an example, the district that I was most recently in, similar scenario, multiple applications submitted, and in the end, one school was designated, that district's building a twin school that incorporated another existing elementary school that also had significant needs. So, so that idea of building consolidation, this is what, would leave this open potentially.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And then the second question I have is that, this is a very, you know, to get these SOIs written to the level that they need to be and submitted in April, along with the nuance that with the Student Opportunity Act, the accountability plans, school account are also now due in April.
April first.
April first, and they're still at the process where they're developing the criteria of what they're, what they want to see being reported on, so I don't know what, maybe you can share some, what that's going to look like, and I know Commissioner Riley has the ability to alter that criteria, so what he wants to see in that reporting, that in itself, because being that it's a new pilot and nuanced, and we don't know what that's going to look like, how do we, how is that going to be balanced? Because it sounds like two huge projects in a very short amount of time, four months doesn't go, you know what I mean, well, it doesn't go, you know what I mean, it's a very, a small window for the amount of work that needs, that need to be invested in this piece and that piece. So I didn't know if you had a battle plan.
Time is, is.
My enemy.
The enemy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's daunting to think about, and talk about all of the other work, but it's, we, in my opinion, I've expressed this here before, we, something needs to happen, we need to move forward in some way, shape, or form. It's unfortunate that this window only opens once for MSBA. I would love to be able to sit here and say, we're trying it for the second or third time, and have these templates already in place with the, but we clearly don't, and, and to miss this window, you know, so, so it's, it's, it certainly is a lot of work.
Respectfully, that, I think that would be my priority, although you, you know, the state piece you can't avoid, you know what I mean? I really do think in order to meet the state piece eventually down the road, we need, we need this.
Well, and.
But I just don't, I mean.
Yeah, and to be in this place where, with, again, with your hopeful, you know, support here, and that of the Selectmen, which I didn't point out, but as you may know, certainly supported this, it's, that's a good place to be as a starting point, with the understanding that, you know, the work now is just going to begin, and as you say, in a rather compressed period of time. We, we have a meeting set up for Monday with the town manager and, and Mr. Hooper to start to create an action plan, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smaha and Mr. Rexton?
So submitting the, the multiple SOIs, saying that the Wildwood is the priority, right? That means that if Wilmington was invited in, that the Wildwood would be the project that's selected, as, and, but it keeps the door open for merging with some of the other schools.
Right.
But it wouldn't be possible that, for some reason, they decide, you know what, the, the SOI for the north, that's the one that we're going to choose, and that wouldn't, that wouldn't happen.
No, I do not believe that that would happen, I think their, their, not regulations, whatever, points to that, I don't think that that's a possibility, I don't believe so, that, so, that, in other words, MSBA comes in and says, oh, the Wildwood is, you know, that is in need, but we think the north is a better project. Wildwood in some way, shape, or form, now, it's interesting, because that's a building that's obviously pre-K, K. So, but, but as what, as, how shall I say this, what is currently the Wildwood School would have to, in some way, shape, or form, be a part of any new facility that became a project, if that, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, certainly in our case, you know, whether pre-K is a part of that, that'll, that'll all have to come and can still come as part of the evolution of this process of, and again, if we were invited in, where MSBA would work with us, with the town, there's a whole lot of data that is gathered through this process before anything is finalized, and then ultimately brought back to the town for, for a vote of approval, so.
Mr. Rexton?
This is, this is a daunting amount of work to do in a short period of time, but I think that, one way or the other, we need to collect this information, so this, you know, even if it were not, or if everything was not going to be an MSBA project, you know, we've already discussed that the need to really, like, get deep into what the school needs are and what the feasibility for different options are. And so I think that, one way or the other, this work is going to pay off for us in moving forward, no matter, no matter, you know, what timeline, or whether we end up just kind of building some of these ourselves, some with, in partnership with MSBA. But, yeah, this is, this is going to be a lot of work, and it's going to have to be a, you know, the, the town side will help in a lot of ways, but this is, it seems to me going to be a real district effort, going down to, not just the building, but down to the classroom level, because I think that, you know, to, it's a competitive process, and you really have to make your case. And so, you know, just kind of throwing a few things out there, saying, oh, we could use more space, or we have a couple falling parts, it's like, no, you have to really drill down and just kind of like show, no, this classroom has this problem, we can't do this program, because we don't have appropriate space for such and such, and, I mean, I suppose we could have an entire little section, you know, do ten pages just on student support services, and, and their, and their section.
Yeah.
But it, you know, to, to be competitive, you really have to drill down into details, and, and it takes a lot of work, and it's, you know, it's not something that can just be done at the, you know, central level, even at the administrative level, that, it's like, you need, it's like, kind of like, teachers, tell us, tell, give us your stories, what are the things you can't do because of the limitations of our facilities, and then we try to incorporate as much of that, as much of that into it. Yeah, that's, this is going to be a lot of, a lot of work to do for, for the district, but, but I think necessary work, no matter what way we go.
So the recommended motion, move to approve the request to begin the preparation of six statements of interest for Wilmington Public Schools, Elementary Schools, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the April 2020 deadline. So moved?
So moved.
Mrs. Byrne, seconded by Mr. Fenelly, all in favor? That is unanimous.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Not, not looking at my timestamp, I'm going to move right past that? It was an unrealistic, it was unrealistic. First reading, revised policies. So you have, in your packet, BDD through BK, and you have the policy review summary. And so I'm going to quickly go through, and then if you, there's something you want to spend time discussing, if we could just sort of raise your hand, and we'll, and we'll talk through that, otherwise we'll, we'll quickly move through them. And then there are the earlier ones that we didn't approve, some questions came, the policy committee did talk about it tonight, so we'll present out on that, and then we'll have further discussion, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Is that good? Okay. So BDD, school committee superintendent relationship, any questions, any discussion? Okay. BEDD, rules of order. Can you see here, third, fourth, and fifth paragraphs are in local policy, not reflected in MASC model policy, policy subcommittee recommends removal of these two paragraphs, and then add reviewed October 23rd to the bottom, questions or discussion? Mrs. Byrne?
I'm not against the recommended striking of the, all the language, per se, but I do think that it may be wise to cap the meetings at a certain time limit, only from past experience with regards to, we did have a situation that, to run almost 11:30, quarter of 12, of which we, I think we closed the meeting, but we did do a press conference afterwards. I also, in, just looking at the, some of the boards in the town, some of them have gone to 12:30, quarter of one, I think, I mean, not that we ever, I've ever had that experience, that I think that it can't hurt to maybe have sort of a cap on our meetings, I think only because of, since we do all work full days, and I think sometimes discussion can be lost when it gets so late between fatigue and such that, and it would also, by doing so, if it is a topic of, of great interest to the public, we could, we can continue the meeting without prejudice and pick it up at, you know, on another date. So I just throw that out for consideration, you know, for consideration is all.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Rexton?
Just, I think that our feeling in the subcommittee when we were looking at this was that there was no real need to necessarily tie ourself in a written policy to a particular time limit, because the committee always has the discretion to table issues on the agenda and, you know, adjourn or suspend if we feel that, just like this is, you know, meeting is going much longer than we expected, and so that it didn't remove any ability for us to do that in the, in circumstances that seemed to warrant it.
And that's great, and I recognize that, and maybe I'm being a little too cautious as well, is that if it is a discussion that is, brings forth a lot of tense, and God forbid, I hope we never get to this point, you know, discussion, especially with the public, I wouldn't want it to be, thought that the board is shutting down because it's, you know, we're done, we don't, you know, in the negative, you know what I mean? By having the cap, I mean, we could, it's easier to refer to a policy saying, you know, it's school district policy to shut down meetings at this time. The chair also, in that red, in that sense, since they kind of run that meeting and usually takes it in consideration, the board can always say, you know, and maybe we could put language in there saying, you know, if the chair chooses to consider, because we may be at the end of a discussion, you know what I mean, that might run beyond that curfew, that could always be at the discretion, but I just, I don't want it ever to appear that the board won't entertain public comments, especially at times of heightened topics, you know what I mean, and those things can't, I don't, I, those things can't be foretold, per se. I just wanted, just to make sure that we had some level of protection that would not, you know, for the right reasons, that we could close, you know, the meeting without prejudice to the discussion, to be able to carry out, I mean, of course, you're right, but I just, I didn't, I'm just being, I guess I'm being over cautious, I just want to make sure that that can't come back to say, well, the board didn't want to, you know, didn't want to entertain the tense discussion, and just shut the meeting down completely, you know what I mean, I just didn't want to, I just didn't know if it would protect, you know, the board and how we operate.
Well, I mean, as, as written specifically, I don't think it would even then provide much protection, because the, because it talks about no new topic being brought up for discussion or action, and I think what you're describing or envisioning would be an ongoing discussion that's already begun, that we don't want to see as shutting down early for a deadline, except, but, but as, as written, it wouldn't apply in that situation anyway.
Well, yeah, well, we don't, we really don't entertain any new agenda items that are, any items that are not yet on the agenda, so it wouldn't be that type of discussion, would be something that would have been beyond our agenda?
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, am I misunderstanding?
Well, I, at least from my reading of this, when they talk about no new topic brought up for discussion or action after 11:00 PM, I was thinking, at least my interpretation was that meaning something on the agenda.
Oh.
So it's on the agenda, it's simply, but it's like, oh, we hit 11:00 PM, we turned into a pumpkin, I guess that happens at midnight, to turn back into a pumpkin.
So.
Well, I mean, I just brought it up for, just if, if the board feels that it's not necessary.
Would you like to make a motion to keep that second paragraph? It sounds like we're talking, I'm sorry, the second read paragraph, it shall further be the policy to require an automatic adjournment at 12:00 midnight, is that what you would like to keep?
I think, you know, something, I think I would like to make a motion to amend the recommendation to keep the second paragraph, which reads, it shall further be the policy of the school committee, or however the language needs to write so that it's grammatical correct, to require an automatic adjournment at midnight at either regular or special meetings, exceptions to this policy, action, or intent may be made only by a motion to suspend the rule, which shall not be subject to debate or discussion, and a two-thirds vote required, excuse me, two-thirds acquired, required affirmation of the motion.
So you want to keep the unanimous, do we need a motion to even do this? I'm sorry, do we need a motion?
No, for first reading.
No, okay. So you want to keep the second read paragraph?
Yes.
Does anyone have a problem with that?
I would, I wouldn't necessarily support that if it, if it comes up as an amendment, because I think a motion for adjournment requires a vote at any rate, and if we are choosing to do that to avoid something difficult, that we're going to have to face that. That's, that's my personal opinion.
Okay.
I, and I don't see this, I don't see this group doing it.
Agree. I just, you never know what the future holds, is all.
All right, so anybody else? Strike it, keep it? Strike it? I mean, I already struck it, Jesse, so we already agreed to strike it, so I guess.
We're still.
It's still the first reading, so we'll move on.
Swing you away.
But when we go to the second reading, it's pretty much a quicker, so I want to make sure we iron this out, just so that it doesn't come all around again and again. So, does that seem okay? Are you comfortable with that?
Of striking?
Not, yeah, but striking.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. BEDF, voting method. So take a look at those changes. We've made an addition to match MASC's policy handbook, votes of the school committee will be taken by voice vote, our hand count shall be recorded in the minutes. Yes?
Just a clarification.
Sure.
Voice vote is, is something entirely different than roll call vote, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Voice vote is basically saying, I'll say aye.
Yep.
I'll say nay.
I just wanted to ensure that that, that's different. Thank you.
Any other discussion questions? Comfortable with this? All right, thank you. Moving on, we have BEDG, which is a policy on the minutes, and you can see the changes there. We've made some additions, some movement, you'll just, some things have been sort of just moved around to match the MASC policy. We deleted original one and two, renumbered original three and two, you know, so there's just been some movement around, and then just to sort of tidy it up a little bit.
Yeah, again, just a little, the last paragraph.
The budget?
The approved budget. I was just asking, I'd like a little just clarification at the understanding, is the removal of it, does it appear in a, a different area within our policy manual? I, I'm just not sure if it's, is it?
I think that it was more, I don't know if it shows, but I think that the, the section was, or the reason to delete it was that it just is not part of minutes.
Okay.
That this is a section on minutes, and, I mean, I think the approved budget should be available, of course, to, to any, any person in Wilmington, but, but it doesn't, such a thing doesn't belong in the minutes section.
So, okay, so just out of, just for additional clarity, I know with any handouts that are given to us that we discuss at meeting, which also becomes attachments to our minutes, that has nothing to do with that piece, correct? Like those, any handouts that we get, let's say the Walker report, that, we, when that came through at the last minutes, because it was disseminated, it's considered a public record, so it needs to be, I believe if I'm correct, it's. so it needs to be, I believe if I'm correct, it's associated with the minutes from that meeting, or it's kept like in that. So, I just wanted to make sure that the removal of this didn't, you know, we were, we are clear and transparent in our policy with regards to those things that are...
And if, I think, so look at the note on the next page, specific, so this is an addition, specific comments in our discussion should only be included in the minutes as a result of a vote. The minutes are not a transcript of the meeting. Documents used during a school committee meeting become part of the official record. Does that cover that?
That does, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay.
That's part of the open meeting law, that they, they don't have to be kept with the minutes, but they have to be listed in the minutes, and then they have to be available separately. They have to be maintained as a public record.
Thank you very much.
B E D H. Public comment at school committee meetings. The procedures outlined in this policy are not aligned with our current practice. The Subcommittee recommends bringing number one to full committee for further discussion. Specific to when public comment should occur during the meeting, Subcommittee will also bring suggested language for number three to the full committee. So, can we look at number one? At the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals or group representatives will be invited to address the committee. The Chair shall determine the length of the public participation segment. So, it's not what we do. We have a, we have a section for public comment, but we didn't feel comfortable striking that without talking as a committee about whether or not that was something we should do or shouldn't do, and so, am I missing something? Mr. Samaha?
So, basically, it's, this number one is, is public comment, and it's basically putting public comment at the very beginning of the meeting?
Mm-hmm. Mrs. Burns?
Sorry, a little too detail oriented? So, this doesn't pertain to guests that come to speak before the committee, like CPAC or IPAS, I just want to make sure that, I mean, I know it's under public comments, but I didn't know if those groups were represented in that public comment piece.
If they're invited and part of the agenda, is that part of the agenda? There would be...
Right, I didn't know. I just wanted to make sure I'm, I'm clarifying the understanding.
Yeah, this is different, this is just the public comment for any resident who shows up and wants to address the...
All right. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Address the committee.
I know I overthink things, so...
My, my personal opinion of this is, generally speaking, public comments will often refer to matters we've had on the agenda, so I think it makes more sense to have it at the end. That's, I would, I would maintain it as we've been holding it.
Okay. Mr. Ragsdale?
See, I've, I've come to think that we should place the public comment at the beginning of the meeting. One, because while it's true, as Mr. Bjork says, that many people want to comment on the agenda, in fact, that was what I tended to do anytime I made a public comment before I was a member of the committee. But after the fact, if we've already taken a vote or already had the discussion, then the issue that they might have wanted to speak on is moot. And in the past, of course, we have been willing to move public comment out of order when we had a sense that there were people here who wanted to address something that we were going to discuss. But it seems to me that the beginning of the meeting makes the most sense, is for people to speak to items on the agenda so that they can have their say before we deliberate and take any actions. And I think that having public comment at the beginning of the meeting would also encourage more people to come to the meetings if they have something to say, because right now, if you have something you feel that you want to say in public comment, you know that you're going to be here probably two hours before you can have your say, and I think that's a disincentive for people to, a disincentive for people, for people to come and participate.
I think part of our discussion, though, was when we are discussing something like a policy or the report, that there's a lot of education that happens during that time, and people come in and make their comments, they actually haven't heard the presentation yet, and so would that be, they're coming because they, they're upset about something or angry about it, but they actually haven't heard us talk about, say, transportation, or whatever it may be, and so then to have it there, well, then they may leave and never actually hear the presentation that we know may have actually helped the situation quite a bit. I think sometimes we're strategically putting things on the agenda to respond to things we're hearing from the community, and if we have it as an open forum sort of at the beginning, and they leave, I don't think that they'll then sort of get the background and the education that they need in those particular topics. So, that was why I think we sort of, so I hear you, and I, but I'm also, I think it's more than just hearing from the public, it's having them hear about the pieces behind that and the discussion. And we're getting lots of emails about something, I'm saying, we really do, or some people are, we have to, we have to talk about this, and so if they leave, then they're missing all of that. Mrs. Newhouse?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I agree with you. I felt like with the Walker report, there was quite a few upset parents, but once everyone sat through the lengthy presentation...
Which was not intentional.
It really...
Didn't meet your time stamp.
It really dampened a lot of the...
Sure.
Upset feelings, and the questions were different than what I think most of us were expecting.
Mr. Samaha?
I think, I think, when we're thinking about this, I think it's, it's sort of trying to, you know, weigh the two things, you know, what is going to be more beneficial, you know? I think, actually, I think I agree with having it at the beginning. I think it makes more sense. I think the, the disincentive of somebody's going to wait two hours, you know, you're not going to get anybody, for the most part. And I think that most people, when they have a public comment, they're going to say it, they're going to already have, you know, a lot of people will come with it already written, or written on their phone, or whatever, they're going to say what they have to say a lot of times regardless of whatever presentation is given, you know, and I think, I think in a lot of ways, a public comment is, is for them to, you know, is for people in the community to be, to be heard, and for us to hear them. I think in addition to sort of, you know, what, what Mrs. Newhouse was just saying is, if there's a presentation, you know, if the presenter had heard, you know, several comments, you know, earlier in the evening, they can then maybe address it in their presentation. I mean, I, I don't want to, so I, I, I think I agree with it being in the beginning.
Mrs. Burns?
I, I'm not, I'm not a big fan, I can't, don't think it can hurt, but I think for the points that you just pointed out, and because the Chair does have the discretion of moving public comments with the will of the Board, I, I think, I personally prefer, I don't, not a big fan of having it at the end of everything. I like, I do, I do like it how the Chair does have the discretion to say, we will be hearing public comments after the presentation, because, but for the same fact that to speak is one thing, but if you don't hear what exactly is going on, because it can be really intricate, and it does broaden our scope of actually what is transpiring, what it looks like, and what we need to do in order to solve a problem, solve these problems, if, because parents are just as vital to expedite, with, like, we, the school cannot execute these initiatives solely by themselves within the districts. We need the support of parents working with staff to see the, to drive these initiatives, whether it be feedback, whether it be support in problem-solving strategies for, you know, to reach their kids. We need that support, and for parents to say what they want to and then just leave and not really understand, and I think this is where a lot, as Mrs. Newhouse spoke to, a lot of parents don't have the complete understanding, and sometimes I, you know, it takes the presentation and the discussion, this question's asked by all, to have a broader understanding as to what it actually looks like, and not mis, not have things misinterpreted. I do like that discretion, and I, you know, and again, it's, it's, I don't know how you can, unless, I mean, Mr. Ragsdale, God bless him, has a lot of insight when it comes to education, but, and I think, you know, I can see how that would be useful, and I, but I don't know if that would have any bearing of parents showing up and then leaving without gaining the knowledge of the discussion and the presentation. I don't know if it'll be helpful to what the work that we're doing without, you know, I mean, because, you know, I, I, I just think they're important.
But at the same time, Mr. Samaha, you have, they already, they're going to say what, they already know what they want to say, they're prepared, they do, I mean, so...
But if I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, no, please.
I'll, my last, my last point would be two things. I do think that it's important for them to hear what we're doing perhaps before they speak, because I do think that many of the questions were changed after that, that presentation in particular. And secondly, and this may go towards number three as well, we have to keep in mind, these, this is a public meeting, this is not a public hearing. So, I think we need to keep that in mind when we're, when we're thinking about public comments.
It's true that we, as, as we said, that the Chair with the Committee can also, you know, move comments up, and we've taken comments out of, public comment out of order, but you can only do that when people show up, if they're there to have their comments taken out of order in the first place. And we've definitely had cases in which people have been sitting in the meeting and just waiting and waiting, and then they leave, because they can't wait any longer, that they have to get home to their kids, and they can't, don't have time to, to make the comment. And I think that certainly, ideally, people would hear our full discussions, would have read the packet, would be very informed before they came in to make comments, and certainly that would improve the level of comments that we would receive. Anyone would, would respond better after, you know, knowing the full context of, of the issue of the discussion. But I don't think that we should take an attitude that we're going to make it harder for you to comment and speak to us in our public meeting without doing homework. I mean, it would be best, obviously, we want people engaged, we want them to know as much as possible, but if a resident has something that they want to say to us, and that we have public comment for that purpose, so that they can address the School Committee, and again, it's not a public hearing, we don't necessarily have to engage, we don't have to, you know, respond, it is their opportunity to address the Committee and say what they want to say. And I think that it is just putting, putting an obstacle in front of them to be able to have that basic ability to do it, which, which I think we should change.
I don't disagree. Mrs. Burns?
I don't disagree either, and I think there's two options that we can go with. I think there's nothing to say that we can't have public comment twice if we, if there's a need. I recently learned through, from a conference, that some boards actually have a sign-up sheet with regards to, because they have to, you know, repeat, do their name and address as to what agenda item they're here for, and that, and once we, right before the meeting opens, that sign-up sheet goes before the Chair so they can see who's here for what item. I mean, we can balance it that way, you know, maybe, you know, as opposed to putting language in that says at the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, maybe we can minimize that language, because I know it's helped other boards run and meet the needs of, you know, the lateness of meetings and items that they want to talk to, but that, that, that's a solution that one board use, optimizes in their board meetings. They have a sign-up sheet with parents who do come as to what topic they would like to speak to. It gives the Chair notice that, notice of their intent, you know, I just, it's just something to consider, that maybe we can look at it that way as well, but...
Okay. Any other thoughts, then we need, we're going to move on?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, of course.
Is there, is there a way that we can, is there like a trial of it? You know, where you sort of try it out for, you know, a couple, you know, a couple meetings and, and play around with it, and see how it actually does play out before we, you know, make a ruling, or we decide on this, and then we come back to it and, and change it later, or whatever?
Sure, and I think we can probably either approve, I mean, we can approve this next time and try it, and if it doesn't work, we can come back, and I mean, sure, I don't think there's, we're doing so many policies, I guess, one more...
We could also, we could also just table this for a while...
We could.
And try it a different way...
But then we're not following...
And then come back and revise it once with what we actually like and decide to do.
I think that makes, that's cleaner.
But then we're not following the policy as it's written, because then we're going to be doing our own thing.
But we're not following the policy now as it's written, and haven't been for years.
But, yeah, but the Chair also has that discretion, so it's almost a contradictory in my mind.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll trial it.
And, and actually, there was one other thing...
Number three.
I know, we're, we're so ready to get rid of this.
Topics for discussion must be limited to those listed on the school committee meeting agenda for that evening.
I would not remove it.
I would not be bothered.
Mr. Ragsdale?
We, well, we flagged this only because this, again, does not match necessarily with our practice, that we have, you know, not denied people to come and discuss something that was not on the agenda. We've had people come back the next meeting after something that we've discussed, and then they want to have their say. We had someone who came in and spoke to us about vaping, the, at the following meeting, to when we had originally had that discussion. It was not on the agenda, but at least given the paucity of public comment that we get, it was, you know, no problem to, to have that. That doesn't mean we should change the policy, but it was just something that we wanted to bring up, to say that we, in fact, allow public comment on items not on the agenda.
Point of note, it's the Chair that allows for it, it's not the Board that allows for it. It's at the Chair's discretion to hear or to allow, it's a public meeting, it's not public hearing. It's at the discretion of the Chair to allow that, that discussion. So, not, I wouldn't say we don't follow it, I, I think we do. There may have been instances where we, vaping may have come into the discussion, and if the Board discusses something with vaping, the vaping policy, blah, 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 then anybody who's in this, in the audience can speak to it only because it's brought forth in public meeting, even if it's not discussed, like, if we didn't have that discussion, again, to go back to discuss that whole policy or the vaping situation, again, if it's brought up in discussion, then it, it's brought, it's not an agenda item, it's a part of a discussion, but my understanding is that because it was brought forth in public meeting, and if there's an audience who wants to speak to it, that's one thing, but again, Chair's a discretion of...
It doesn't actually say that here, which we probably should add.
Right.
Well, but...
If we, if we want to get the Chair, give the Chair discretion to do that, then we should just write that into the policy.
Right.
Well, but it's, but it's, the thing is, it's a statement that the Chair has roles and responsibilities defined.
Sure.
So, I mean, you, the Chair, it's understood that the Chair runs the meeting.
Right, so I, so if we add that piece there, I think that that would read...
Additional clarity is always good.
Okay, great, so we'll add that, and then we'll bring that back next time. We won't bring this back, we're going to table this for a little bit. Is that the idea? Sorry, Tristan, did you get that? Tabling B E D H for a pilot. So, stay tuned, public, Wilmington Public. Come next time for all your public comments at the beginning of our meeting. Going to be lines out the door.
Especially late December.
I can't, I'm excited.
People have nothing, nothing other to do.
We'll ask the Apple to run a story about it, and, all right. Guidelines for, how are we doing on time? Do I need to move on? I'm sorry. Is there a policy for how long you can review policies? Okay. B E D H E. This is not in the local policy book. The Subcommittee recommends the adoption of the policy as written by MASC. So, you haven't taken a kind of a deep look at this, and you want to wait on that, that's fine, but if you're comfortable with it, then we'll just move on.
Just keep drawing your attention to number one below, depending on what you decided with that previous policy, around the placement of the comment.
Great. Okay. B E E, special procedures for conducting hearings, just a few changes in the wording. BG, we've just added elementary and secondary education, and then the source and date. BG, B, policy adoption. Just some additions. Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Under the adoption, policy adoption, number two, I just, just going forth, my question is, we've been voting on the first readings, it doesn't state that that's, that, that's, you know, it doesn't state it within this policy. I didn't know if this was an opportune time, that if the Board felt that they would like to vote in accepting the first readings, you know, we, how we usually vote to accept, you know, whatever, you know, however we do it, that's not in this policy, which I think should be if that's the will of the Board. So, I thought this would be an opportune time to raise that. And I also had some, two questions with regards to, with new policies, is, do we have a way of formulating as to when they are adopted into our district policy, such as the recommended, you know, the previous one that was recommended? I didn't know if there was a, a way as to when was this adopted, initially adopted, you know what I mean? I don't know if there was a recording purpose, we, we do the review, but do we do with new policies... I don't know if there was a recording purpose, we, we do the review, but do we do with new policies, would it make sense to, the first year of adoption adding that in? So that there's a record as to when the board adopted it? I mean, would that?
If it's added to the bottom of the policy, that the date is added, that the board has accepted or adopted it.
If it's a new policy?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank you. And my, second, my last question pertaining to this piece is, I'd be interested in thoughts as to whether or not we would want to consider adding language stating that we should like review the policy manual once every 10 years, like, like housekeeping, like you're currently doing. I don't know, I wanted to throw that out too, I don't, I don't think 10, I don't know if 10 years is the right timeframe, but I just thought I'd offer that, I'd be interested in people's thoughts, the board's thoughts behind it.
It's sort of addressed in the next one, policy review and evaluation. I don't know that we've put a specific timeframe on it, but it sort of speaks to.
Thank you.
When we'll take a look.
Jesse, I appreciate that.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I can just speak a little bit to the issue of like the first readings.
Yeah.
Because I had an opportunity at the M A S C conference to speak with a professional parliamentarian. You have to think of.
He's awesome, isn't he?
Capital P's there. And, and he said that there is, there's no need to approve or have any motions involving with first readings because there's no action being taken. It's just something that happened. It's essentially informational even though it's intended to be enacted. So we can just do the first readings and then just move on, that there's, there's nothing to approve because we're not taking any action. We can if we want.
All right, so I'm gonna just go quickly through the next few and then I'm gonna actually stop before we get to B G E and we'll continue those next time. Okay Tristan, so our, the next one is B G C, no changes. And then B G D, which is also C H B. Is that the one we looked at tonight, Mr. Ragsdale?
Yeah.
Okay. That's funny, yeah. And so some, some, some pretty simple word changes here. And I think we'll stop there and we'll continue with the other ones at our December meeting. But I do want to go back to a few from our second reading. Just see if we pull that packet out, this is the second reading approval of revised school committee policies. We did not approve B D E, and that one I'm actually gonna hold, I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna wordsmith that a bit, so that's just a hold. The next one we did not vote on was B D G, I wonder if we can turn to that. Mrs. Burns had emailed me about keeping the second paragraph. However, because the complexity of school department operations often require specialized legal services, the committee may also retain an attorney or law firm to provide additional legal services. In our subcommittee this evening, we agree that we should keep that paragraph. Any discussion?
I think just that if, it needs to be slightly reworded if it's now the new starting paragraph rather than the second paragraph. There shouldn't be a however, for example, and. An additional, the word addition, additional later on doesn't make sense without the first paragraph, so.
Okay.
I think that just says, we get rid of however, it just starts with because, and then I think we get rid of the word additional, so it just says to provide legal service.
Services.
Services.
Okay. Does that seem reasonable? Mrs. Burns?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so actually, can we vote on that one now, just so that we can have that as an approval? Mr. Bjork, is that a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Fenley? This is a second.
What is this, an auction?
All in favor of accepting B D G, school attorney, with the revision, yep. That's unanimous. Do you have that, Mrs. Dixie? Okay. The other one we did not vote on was B E, school committee meetings. And here there was just a question about whether or not we should include the school committee hearing meeting for budget. At the policy subcommittee this evening, we said we were not going to include that, but we did want to bring it back here for a discussion. If anyone wanted, thought we should include.
I just didn't know if special meeting was defined in the hearing because it does, we do run it slightly different than a regular public meeting, so I guess additional. I was seeking to make, ensure that special meeting, that would be, that would be under that umbrella is all.
It is all interesting that it would be under that umbrella.
Okay.
Great. Is there a motion to approve B E? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Fenley, all in favor, that is also unanimous, thank you. We had B E C, which actually we didn't, we didn't get to. So we're gonna actually have to wait on that, we'll bring that back to the subcommittee. And we'll bring those back to you next time, so those will stand, but the rest, we'll bring back to you at our next one, okay? All right, great, thank you very much. And again, thank you to the subcommittee, this is.
Yeah, great work.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's not an easy task.
Do we still need a couple of motions to accept the first meeting or do we not want to do that?
We don't have to do that, yeah, we're good, thank you. No, but thank you. Okay, which brings us to M A S C, M A S S joint conference update. So Mr. Ragsdale, Mrs. Burns, Dr. Brand and I attended the conference November 6th through the 9th. Would anyone like to share? Well, David, you already started, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Sure, I'll just say that I think that the, from the sessions that I went to, and it was of course very nice to, to be there for, for the sessions, but also it was great, and I know we already talked about this, but it was great to be there for MJ to receive her award and to, to be at that, be at that dinner as well. That was, that was a lot of fun. The, a couple of things I'll just report back from the sessions that I thought was most useful and, you know, most relevant to our work is that I attended one session that was devoted to communication between board and superintendent and town as well. And that involved the towns of Medway and Seconk with their superintendents and school committee chairs talking about some of their communication. One thing that I thought was interesting regarding their strategic plan, the superintendent in Medway, that they have also recently developed a strategic plan and have circulated it very widely, they said they actually paid to mail it to every household in Medway. But one of the, I'm not saying we should do that. One of the benefits.
I'm not looking in those stamps.
But one of the benefits that they found from broad circulation, and that's really the point, from broad circulation and familiarity with the strategic plan is that they found that there, in many cases, when they're asking for things or saying like, this is what we need, they essentially just point to, it's in the strategic plan. We already laid this out, like this is our plan, this is what we need to do, you know, all the people came together, we decided this. And that that cut short lots of arguments, that sort of having it in the plan and having that plan widely circulated within their community has paid, paid a lot of dividends as far as getting kind of the resources that they want in the budgetary process and just getting support behind what they're doing. And I thought that that was, that that was something, and I know that we have also tried to do that as well, but that that was a good lesson to take home. That the more people know that we've developed this plan and are implementing this plan, then the more support we'll get for the, the actual initiatives in it. I attended the, one session on parliamentary procedure, which I also discussed just briefly a minute ago, but I'm not gonna get into any of the details of some of the little things I learned there right now. One other thing I do want to mention is that I attended a very good session that was given by a team from Swampscut and that was about essentially using Google technology to go kind of much more technology and paperless in their district, both in the way that they operated within a district as far as scheduling meetings and assigning, giving assignments and so forth, but also allowing their school committee to go paperless with Chromebooks. And so that they would essentially like use Chromebooks and have links to all of their documents, to all of the agenda items in, you know, an online Google Doc and that they would just kind of like work through it like that. And that every committee member had their own drive where they could put their own private comments onto the documents as they went along. They were able to also adopt it kind of as, as they wanted to, so it didn't have to be an all at once type of thing. This is something that we've discussed a little bit, but this was also an option and I thought something that was worth, worth perhaps pursuing that, you know, you don't have to, you know, we don't have to give up our paper if we're not ready for it, but there are ways to also start to incorporate using some of that technology to deliver meetings. And in fact, even putting the warrants online so that their school committee members can review the warrants on the, on Chromebooks without having to necessarily go in and, and review them in person, which is difficult to do. So I thought that there's also some, and I may speak with, with Ken at some times about just some of the, some, a few of the more details that were there. But I thought those were the most valuable sessions.
How would you sign off on those warrants though?
You still have to go into, you still have to go in to sign them, so generally they would be brought to the school committee meeting for signatures, but everyone had already had the opportunity to review the warrants and so you didn't have to kind of go in and try and just like page through them and like, you know, speed read and so forth. There was actually time to sit down and like see how the district is spending its money and, but still, but still come in and sign the warrants in person. That did have to be done in person.
Great, thank you so much. Mrs. Burns?
I, to, there was several workshops, topics that we as a board, I found interesting that we have been discussing, bringing up such as school committee self evaluations. I took part in a workshop on special education, updates on new initiatives, and the MSBA update, which offered a better understanding of the process and the current timelines, reimbursement rates and other aspects that they look for in the school building renovation and building projects. I believe the gentleman from MSBA was Jack McCarthy. I just, I, he was an entertaining speaker to begin with, so I, I just found it, a, a, a good foundation to stop, to start on with regards to how we are now negating the conversation at this level. There's two particular workshops that I found to be very impactful and of which I've given Paul information to give to Christie Murray is personalized learning and autism. Assistant Superintendent of North Reading Public Schools, Pat Daly moderated this panel discussion. They're currently doing a pilot using, being implemented in their middle school classroom using a new technology called augmented reality smart glasses, which is a tool to lend additional support to students who may be on the spectrum, struggle with recognizing social cue and facial expressions, either have ADHD diagnoses or severe behaviors, to name a few that this new device targets. It's, what it does, it interjects, they're personalized, it personalizes the social emotional learning goals. So each of these glasses can be catered to each child's individual social learning goals within the classroom. The application of the program uses these glasses, which are called Google Glass Platform, where the data is automatically collected as the student wears the glasses on their movements of their head and learning as they respond to icons in the glass. So really quite a, really kind of neat piece. A student hat, wears these glasses, it's only supposed to be for 10 minutes at a time, depending upon what their learning goals are, social emotional goals. It offers these icons that if a student is looking at someone and let's say, you know, Superintendent Brand has got the expression, it, what it does is the glasses pick up on the person's face and it gives an icon to the student. Is it a happy face or is it a sad face? And it's just the picture. And the student with a tilt of the head will, will move it slightly and the glasses will follow it, you know, to respond to if it's a happy, you know, does, is, should, does he look happy? Does he look sad? And that, in, what that does is that movement, data is, like real time data is collected in a, let's see if I have it, in, in a Google program, so that it, it's automatically disseminated to the staff so they can see how students are progressing towards their, their goals. It also is used along with a 360 camera, that if we have life skill students who have difficulties with transitions to different environments, they can preview these environments with a camera, so they can upload, someone can take a 360 photograph of, let's say, an intersection that is, students maybe will be learning how to negate. Teachers can take a picture of that, upload it in the system and it will be projected in the, in the cla, in the, the glasses. So in the comfort of their classroom, they can see the space, hear the noises of that environment and start acclimating to that transition to minimize anxiety, to be able to negate and problem solve. So I found that to be a huge piece that I think would be of some interest to Wilmington and maybe we can find some, see how the pilot in North Reading is going, seeing that's something that could be useful in our own programming. The other one that was huge is the 70 Minutes on Chapter 70, which was moderated by M A S C field director Tracy Novit. I highly recommend this workshop and would definitely offer it, would, I'd like to participate, you know, hope they're offering it again because it's, it is a wealth of information. She did an excellent job on the history of how free public education evolved and came to be in Massachusetts, along with how, what Chapter 70 is, how it works and how it doesn't, and what is currently under wear, way to change it and how the Student Operability Act will and may impact it in the future. She's able to condense a lot of information in a very understandable way in a very short amount of time. The other aspect which I thought was definitely notable, and I hope Dr. Brand will share his insight as well, is that this year's keynote speaker was Dr. Derek Gay. He's an internationally known diversity consultant whose work focuses on issues of diversity and inclusion along with global citizenship. His topic was reframing diversity for the 21st century, which was very enlightening and some of the takeaways from his presentation is how businesses and industry today are really virtual in nature, how companies such as Bitcoin has no actual money, how Airbnb owns no real, real estate and how Uber has no vehicles. He goes on, you know, in looking at this piece, we really need to focus on what skill sets we need to focus on to teach our students in order to be able to succeed in this type of world. And he also spoke to the word diversity and how that plays a role in us, how we, as a society define it. He noted that using the word diversity represents identity, how we identify as individuals who, who we are and how we are, how we perceive ourselves to others and the groups we participate in, the values and heritage experiences, yada, yada. So diversity is more than just race, it's more than just gender, it's, it's how we see ourselves and how we feel we, others perceive us or see us. He further touched upon how problematic the world has become because its context is often used to describe differences as opposed to different, which I think is a key in how we really need to start using that word. But because of these different perspectives of being misused, it kind of undermines the outcomes that we're all striving to gain and what diversity actually represents. He also has an interesting spin in how we should refer to the term of community service and instead we should think about referring it as service learning, which I thought was very poignant to note. So that's the workshop piece, but we, and we also have Division One meetings, which I think I'd like to stop there because I'd like to give Mrs. Bryson and Superintendent Brandon an opportunity to speak about the workshops.
Thank you. So we attended the same workshops. We also attended the MSBA, which I found to be really helpful. I have nothing more to add, other than it sort of helped to clarify the idea of putting out multiple applications and this. And I think the biggest takeaway for me in that was, they don't want us to know everything. And that was helpful for me to, to hear because I felt like we needed to know what we wanted and what was best and they were sort of, helped me to see that that wasn't, that wasn't actually what they were looking for, that they were much more likely to partner with districts who needed them to help kind of see the big picture, which was great. So that was helpful and I think has really informed the work we've done over the past few weeks, so it's exciting. We attended the Dedham, the Dedham District put on a session, kind of a last minute session, I think, and it was really interesting and informative. I won't go into too many details, but I did take lots of notes. One of the most, one of the things I think that I, I bolded, there were lots of things that, that came out of that. And Mike Welch, the Dedham superintendent, presented most of the time, although the school committee members did talk throughout. But he did say that he actually really recommends having a media person for your district and that social media is critical and having someone kind of, which we know, but I think really investing, I think that was a lesson learned for them was this, it really is important. really investing, I think that was a lesson learned for them, was this, it really is important to sort of get ahead of some of those pieces, and their recommendation was to have a social media person 20 hours a week or whatever that might look like. So, we haven't really discussed it, God bless you, since then, but I think that was just like a big takeaway for me. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, I wouldn't. It was, it was a powerful session, certainly, in the context, and also went to the MSBA, and I agree, it was, it was good to hear Mr. McCarthy, he's an engaging individual.
Good, yeah. So, thank you. And again, it was wonderful to celebrate your award.
Thank you for being there.
Thank you, and thank you for reserving us a table.
Thank you.
Okay. Other reports, any subcommittee reports? Does the policy subcommittee, would they like to report out? I'm kidding. It's funny, right? It's like a joke.
I actually have a report with regards to the delegation assembly-
Okay.
As well as the Division One meeting. I've written it all down so I can try to keep to your timeline, our timeline. So, as you know, we're a part of Division One, which, where Division One is comprised of 30 districts. So, we held our meeting at the, the conference. So, there's nine divisions within the Commonwealth. I'll skip that because I think I went into it last meeting. Is that okay? I don't need to clarify what our divisions are? Okay. So, in saying that, Division One held its meeting Friday afternoon in conjunction with Division Two. Beverly Griffin Dunn of PBID and the Essex North Shore Agricultural School Committees is our division chair, and she will serve as our division, continue as a division chair next year. Jennifer Schaffner of the Marlboro Head School Committee was voted as vice chair for the, the new term in January, and I will be the secretary treasurer position starting in January for the Division One. In addition, what transpired is that basically they talked about programming for the upcoming year. The division officers, what they do is try to align with other districts within our division to host programming, workshops, anything that might be of some use and of some interest. Roundtables, for instance, we're hoping, I'm hoping that come next summer, maybe doing a roundtable where, once the resolutions come out, to invite members from this committee as well as from other divisions to meet and just discuss them, just to get a better understanding of the reasoning behind it, and, you know, it just would help, I think, form our own decisions as before conference and how we want to take them on. So, if anybody has any idea or any interest of workshops that they'd be interested in, please see me or I can give you the contact information to Mrs. Griffin Dunn. So, just to share that tidbit. So, going right into delegate assembly, so there were four resolutes, so in the delegate assembly, they follow the rules, the format in voting that was adopted by the National School Board Association, which means any resolution that no one, that any resolution that no one has any discussion on will immediately be brought forth for a vote, and those, and they go through all the resolutions, and if anybody wants to talk on any, they'll, you just have to speak up. So, Resolution Five, which dealt with full funding for transportation costs for students in foster care and state care, passes without discussion. Resolution Seven, poverty in children, passed without discussion. Access to menstrual supplies, Resolution Eight, passes without discussion, and charter school reform, passes without discussion. So, first resolution banning polystyrene from schools, it passed. There's a lot of discussion actually on the floor, and I think it just really passed by the skin of its teeth. In talking, following up with MAS C field directors, they don't think that the likelihood that this would be a viable piece, you know, it probably won't go very far because of the, I did speak out to it on the floor at the, at the time, and feedback after the fact that people shared my same concern, our same concerns, because they weren't mine, but they were ours, with regards to budgetary and the time limit in which their, this resolution was proposing. So, but anyway, so at that, this juncture, it passed. Resolution Two, which is pertaining to educator, educator diversity and professional licensure, this was also a good discussion. Some things brought up was how educators, where English is not their first language, have difficulty in the testing of MTALs. Some, these are some of the comments brought up on the floor. Also discussed was how we were losing highly qualified educators because of a test that is difficult to pass. Two college professors who are also school committee members felt that this test doesn't matter to the larger picture, and its removal doesn't speak to educators who are excellent teachers but may be poor test takers. And, and some, a comment was felt that MTALs does not impact how qualified or unqualified candidates are. So, we did have a Chixerry School Committee candidate who is also a teacher, actually vice principal, did speak out to it that although there, that there needs to be a standard or measure for teacher qualifications, she argued, and it was suggested that although MTAL may not be the end all be all of testing for candidates, removing it without any other standard to take its place would be detrimental in finding skilled candidates, and it was suggested that maybe reviewing the MTALs, or modifying them to make them more impactful instead may be the right passage, but it passed anyway to, that dealt with removing MTALs or lobbying to, lobbying to remove them anyway. If you have any questions, please let me know, I'm just trying to be, trying to be efficient, so, and I know I'm stuttering at this point. Resolution Three is school transportation, it passes with amendments. Changes include RFPs would not be required to go with the lowest bidder. MAS C will file for and support legislation to repeal MGLC 71, comma 7C, and work with the legislature in a deeper analysis of expenses surrounding this piece. So, it passes with those additional amendments. Resolution Four, climate changes, passes with amendments. It was, the article, resolution was amended to include in the rationale to read. The resolution, resolution represents a call by advocates for action on climate change at the federal level and for federal and state funding to anticipate the climatic, climatological, five letters, too many syllables right now. Climatological implications and the emergencies they might cause. So, excuse me. So, Resolution Six passes with amendments, which deals with universal quality pre-care access in Massachusetts. It was amended that in the last, therefore it be resolved, change the term, change the term sufficient appropriation to full capital and operating costs for pre-K in universal full-day kindergarten. So, that's it with the resolutions and the proposed MAS C bylaw amendments that just update the bylaws, passed without discussion. So, please let me know if there's any questions, because I know it may be cryptic, so.
Thank you very much. Questions? Thank you for that detailed report, we appreciate it. And thank you for your time at the conference.
Thank you.
I skipped over public comment, is there public comment? I'm sorry. Okay. There is no public comment? Any correspondence?
None, this is all standard.
Future school committee dates and notable agenda items, December 18th is our final meeting of 2019, and our first meeting in 2020 is January 8th. December 5th, which is this week, we have the Strings Chorus and Soundscape High School in the high school auditorium. December 9th, we have Junior Parent Night in the high school large room, like this room, actually. December 10th, we have grades five through eight strings concert here at the high school. December 12th, grade seven, eight band, high school band, high school jazz band concert here at the auditorium. December 17th, grades five, six band concert here at the high school. December 18th, we have the high school blood drive in the gym, and then on the 19th is the CPAC meeting in the high school library at 6:30. Mr. Raxdale?
And I just wanted to mention that there was a CPAC meeting two weeks ago, at which the main topic of discussion was the Walker Report and presentation from the school committee meeting.
Excellent, thank you very much. And there's nothing else? One final motion? Someone like to make it? Mrs. Burns?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, is there a second? Mrs. Newhouse, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you, everyone.